It is 10:04. As vice chair, I am going to start the meeting. Our chair is on his way. He's having vehicle issues, so I don't want to delay the meeting. So I'm going to go ahead and start the meeting. First order of business is to be reading the district vision, and I will request that Mr. Tatum do that in the absence of Mr. Cho.
The District of Manatee County will be an exemplary student-focused school system that develops lifelong learners to be globally competitive.
And thank you for that. And now we will have our invocation by Pastor Jerry Wicker. I'm sorry, I do not know where I should refer from. If you would please state that, we'd appreciate it. We could all raise for the invocation.
I'm from Manatee United Methodist Church.
Thank you for being here, sir.
My pleasure. Let us pray. Loving and gracious God, you are indeed the giver of all good gifts, and we thank you today for all your blessings, for the successful outcomes of our school events, and for all of our staff members, board members, along with both teaching and support members. We ask that you bless them abundantly, and we continue to seek your wisdom, guidance, courage, and strength. Be with us in our deliberations and help us to be wise in the decisions we make, for the good of all those who have placed their trust and confidence in our leadership. Give us insight to lead with integrity, that our decisions may reflect what is right and good. Help us to make decisions that are for the good of all. Dear Lord, grant us the humility to always seek your will in all that we do and say. All glory be to you, loving God, now and always, through Christ and the Holy Spirit, forever and ever. Amen.
Amen. And now if you'll join me with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And thank you for that. Following along the agenda, we will now go to the lease for, there is no board action required for the lease for February 28th of 2023. And then we have next order of business, approval of the agenda. And the chair, vice chair in this case, has found good cause to amend the agenda to include all items listed under the Agenda Amendments on February 28th, 2023, agenda updated on February 24th, 2023, and posted to the district's website.
So moved.
I'll second.
If you could all please vote.
Well, I'm not signed into Granicus, so I'll vote with my hand. I approve, and I'll get there.
All right. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? And there we are. And passes unanimously. Okay, next order of business is approval of the minutes for the February 24th, 2023 School Board Regular Meeting that was held on February 17th, 2023. Need a motion for the aye?
So moved.
Sorry, Ms. Messenger?
I think we need a recommendation.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Yes, I recommend the approval of the minutes from the School Board meeting on February 14th, 2023, and the School Board Workshop on February 17th, 2023.
So moved.
No, I moved.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'll second.
Okay, there you go. And if everybody could please vote. And that item of business passes. Mr. Tatum, are you logged in now?
I vote yes.
Okay. And we have a technical issues. Here we go. And that motion passes. Okay, and now we will move on to our recommendations, our recognitions with Mr. Barber and Mr. President Granicus.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair, Board Members, and Superintendent Saunders. As they're coming up, let me just say a few words about this first recognition. February is Career and Technical Education Month, according to the Association for Career and Technical Education. As you well know, our district is, has a long history of excellence in this area, and we're very proud of that. Just as an example, last week, students from the School District of Manatee County dominated the 45th Annual Florida Technology Student Association Conference held in Orlando. There were 79 events in that competition, and the Manatee District captured 256 top-10 finishes, including 27 first-place trophies and 90 top-three finishes. So, as I said, we're very proud of career and technical education. We have a proud history in it. And to tell us more is the District's Executive Directory of Adult Career and Technical Education, Dr. Paul Ganzemersa. Paul?
Thank you, Mr. Barber. Good morning, School Board Chair, School Board, Superintendent Saunders, and staff. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to be able to celebrate career and technical education in the School District of Manatee County. I'm happy to report that our district is one of the leaders of CTE in the state of Florida on every level, from elementary to Manatee Technical College. Matter of fact, just today, if you look at your screen, I had the opportunity to see skills at work at the Commercial Art Program over at Braden River High School. The instructors, Bill Farrell and Casey Fabanski, are having their students work as a team to create a chalk mural. If you look at the screen, you'll see that's what they're using as their example, and you'll see it's set up in a grid. They put that grid onto the ground. I put an arrow. You can kind of see numbers, and you can see some of the lines on her hair. But they're working as a team to actually chalk this mural down in the courtyard. And that shows how they work together towards creating art for the school. He has levels ones through four out there, working together. He was bragging about how great they do and how they actually go out and get jobs in the industry, in commercial art and other art industries. And some of them even go, have a chance to go on to continue education. And so, a lot of great things are happening in our schools. I can't show you everything today. We'd be here for nine hours. And I think we have a special event around 1 o'clock today, so I don't want to miss that event. I would like to invite, introduce our staff to you. So this is your ACT staff that we have. So to my right, to your left, we have Dr. Vions. Dr. Vions is the Director of Manatee Technical College. To my left, we have the Assistant Director for Career and Technical Education Secondary, that's Kelly Kennedy. To my far right, to your far left, we have Jennifer McManish, who's our STEM Coordinator. So she works a lot with the elementary schools. And to my far left, we have Kristi Clark, who is new to our team, working with work-based learning, which is important for the Perkins Grant. So I want to introduce the staff to you before I go into the presentation. So thank you all. With adult career and technical education, it works at the secondary level as well as the post-secondary level. To do that, we have programs that are approved by the state of Florida, and it comes from 17 CTE clusters. So I have those clusters listed for you. I won't read them for you. And so what happens is, if we have ideas, if we have innovation, if our community says, hey, we need some jobs in this area, we have to go to the state of Florida to see if that is offered as one of the programs in that cluster. With that, we have CTSOs, which are the Career and Technical Student Organizations that Mr. Barber had mentioned, TSA, this past weekend. We have six of the organizations that are aligned with those frameworks of those programs. So those students have an opportunity to be a part of those STS, CTSOs. And with that, they learn skills, not only about how to do the job and how to work in the classroom, but also student leadership. And they can be a student leader at the district level, the state level, or national level. So, once they have a chance to do all of that, those are the six groups and their logos. In the classroom, they also have the opportunity to be able to earn industry certifications. Industry certifications are assigned by the state, and they're the ones who really connect it all together through third-party agencies to make that work. So this is one-fourth of one of the 17 pages of industry certifications that are connected to the programs. Not every single program has a certification that's approved through the state. Each year, the state puts together a list that they approve it. The students can earn that industry certification in the classroom that can be transferred out into the workplace to shows that they're career-ready when they graduate. In addition to industry certifications, the teachers work with their advisory committees to be able to work together to show them what businesses they're going to and what they can do as far as a job shadow, internship, maybe apprenticeship, or something like that. In addition to that, high school students who are in the CTE programs can earn some credit at MTC through an articulation agreement. The students at MTC can also earn credit that could go towards SCF as an articulation agreement. So sometimes you'll be in a meeting, and you'll start seeing some things come about articulation agreements, and that's the agreements that we have with the educational institutions to help the students be able to earn more so they can move forward with their education. We have a lot of innovation. Our superintendent has been very strong with that to say, we want to be leaders in education in all aspects, even in CTE. So with that, some of our innovations that we have is the Roots Robotics, which you'll see in the left picture. And we also have Garner-Holt Animatronics that we just received. That's from California. That's in the right picture. So we try to have some innovation, not only recently, but what can we do with our students to have them engaged, to be up-to-date, state-of-the-art with not only the programs, but also with equipment? With that, one of our programs that we have in elementary school that many districts don't have is the STEM program, and it's called Inspiring Elementary Through Engineering. We call it the IE2 program, actually IE squared program. And that program is a STEM program that we have in the elementary schools. We also have innovations at that level as well. One of the innovations, we have the WAS Ed program. That's more through the curriculum side of the house. We also have the Agriculture Program that's at Maica City, first in our area. And we also are starting an underwater robotics program at Anna Maria to join up with the Guy Harvey curriculum that's going out there as well. So this is all hands-on, minds-on learning that the students can learn. Once they get that education, the hope is that they continue that education into careers. So the students should be receiving an impactful education that provides the foundational skills that are relevant to real-world careers. So with that, we have three special speakers that we'll have today to be able to share with you how CTE has impacted them and what they've used with that for them to be successful in their life. So what I'd like to do is to invite up our first speaker, Oscar Hernandez Baron. He's currently at Manatee Technical College, and he's a student who will be completing the Automotive Collision Program in the end of August. He's currently working with one of our business partners at Chris Craft Boats in Bradenton, and he's a painter with them. One of the things is, our students do so well that a lot of the businesses hire them before they finish the program. And one of the things that we always say is, we hope that you finish the program. So, because a lot of times, it's really easy to get the job and get out. So what I'd like to do is go ahead and turn it over to Oscar for him to share with you what CTE has done for him. Oscar, thank you for coming.
Good morning.
Good morning.
SEC STE has really helped me out a lot in my life. In the beginning, I didn't know what I wanted to do. I used to go to SEC when I was in high school, but they told me that MTC was, they had a better professor, better equipment, and better way to learn. The minute I stepped in, it felt like a different environment. I didn't feel like a student. I felt like a coworker, a partner with my teacher. He's really showed me a lot. He's never, he's never treated me like a student. He's always told me, go do it. I've done it, and he's taught me the right way, the better way, and the faster way. He's prepared me to go to Chris Craft. He's helped me out a lot, even going into and getting the job. And even at Chris Craft, everything I've learned at school, I've done over there. Painting, sanding down, everything. Right at the moment, I want to stay in school. I want to learn as much as I can, as fast as I can. I just want to do the best for my life, and MTC has really helped me out for that. Thank you.
Great. That's great.
I have a little project for him out in the parking lot.
You'll have to connect up with Oscar after the meeting, so. Next, our second guest we have today is Kyle Wright. He's a 2021 graduate of Southeast High School. He was the TSA Chapter President, the TSA State Sergeant at Arms, and Regional Treasurer. While at Southeast, he competed four years in engineering program and currently working as an engineering technician with Manatee County, where he assists engineers in all aspects of design and building process. Kyle is currently studying at SCF to become an engineer. I present to you Kyle Wright. Thank you, Kyle.
Good morning, everyone. As you've just heard, TSA was a large aspect of my high school career, and I would have to owe a lot, if not all, of my skills that I use in my daily work basis to TSA and the engineering program at Southeast High School. With this, the TSA program has taught me many skills, such as public speaking, how to juggle many plates, as my boss says, spend them all, make sure that all the projects are being done as they should, meeting deadlines, and just working as a team in general. Without this, I would not have had the, what I would call the best door to ever open for me, which is my job working as an engineering tech for Manche County Public Works. And while I'm studying to become an engineer, I'm able to learn with them. And the only reason I say that I have this job currently is because of the program at Southeast, the engineering program, in which I got an industry certification in AutoCAD. And I use AutoCAD on a daily basis for almost every single thing that I do. And I just wanted to say thank you for having me here. I hope you understand the importance of CTE in our local schools.
Good job.
Thank you. Thank you, Kyle. Our third person was not able to be here after the schedule change. So Mark Nanny is a 2010 graduate of Southeast High School. While at Southeast, he competed in TSA and Formula One in schools as part of an engineering program. He's a multi-time state and national award winner, and he and his team, United Racing, were the 2010 Formula One in Schools World Champions. Mark holds two bachelor's degrees and a master's degree in mechanical engineering from the Florida Institute of Technology, and is currently working on his PhD. Mark is reliability engineer manager at Northrop Grumman in Melbourne, Florida. So since he wasn't able to be here, we were able to do a recording for him to be able to send his wishes and whatnot. So we hope you enjoy this short little video.
My name is Mark Nanny. I am a graduate of Southeast High School from 2010. I was a member of TSA, both at Harley Middle School and Southeast TSA, for seven years. The programs at all these schools really set me up for my career, gave me a lot of passion for engineering. I will say Ms. Linda Chambers at Harley Middle School is the reason I'm an engineer now. It's really kind of sets you up, the ability to collaborate and learn and get through challenges and fight through those things. And now it's set me up into my current career, where I'm a reliability engineering manager at Northrop Grumman. And on a day-to-day basis, we have challenges that come up, and we have to get through those challenges, and it's working together and just using your resources you have available to achieve the impossible.
Very nice.
Thank you, Mark. For over 50 years, Manatee Technical College has proudly served our students by offering outstanding educational experiences leading to great careers, while providing a skilled workforce for business and industry in Manatee County and surrounding areas. To meet this demand, MTC has expanded to include over 50 programs, which is one of the largest in the state. Many programs can be completed in a year or less, and focuses on training for students to get a better job, providing business and industry with skilled professional workforce. MCL also offers classes to adults seeking to earn their GED, as well as English of Speaker of Other Languages, the ESOL program, as well as continuing education programs for individuals or groups who want to enhance their current skills. Dr. Vions and her staff has assembled a nice little bag for you of marketing materials that they use to reach out to the community, and she wanted to make sure that you had your own little set, so as you go out to brag about how great CTE is in our district, and as you reach out to different community members about the importance of CTE, not only in high schools, but also at MTC. We always need more students at MTC. It's not like high school, where you're getting 300 or whatever coming in. We always have to recruit for the students. So we hope that you enjoy that package to be able to reach out to your community. If you ever need any more materials, I'm sure Dr. Vions has her vault that she can go to to be able to get those materials for you. So I wanted to thank you for the opportunity to be able to share with you about CTE here in Manatee County, and we thank you for this opportunity to be able to speak with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have an actual auto mechanic, correct, class?
Yes, we do.
Because I got a Jeep Grand Cherokee that you're going to need to look at.
Well, I do have to say about our auto program, because we do have one at Parrish Community High School, as well as at MTC. There are some limitations to the types of vehicles, how old they are, and what we can do. So unfortunately, a lot of times, a lot of times, we can't provide that service, but we do use vehicles to be able to train on. So if you want us to train on it and then not be able to use it because we pull it apart, we'd...
Right now, it's not working, so.
We'd love to have the donation, so. Last thing, as I step away, we do have open house at MTC at the two campuses, April 25th at East Campus and April 26th at Main Campus. Again, thank you very much.
I do have a question, if I could. Not car-related, but laser cutting and that. Do you make parts that you can't find in other places? For example, if you have a piece of equipment, somebody's trying to find a part, you know, I would donate a piece of equipment that needs a part that I cannot find anymore, just for that purposes of, okay, you could probably take the dimensions and cut a sprocket, is what it is. It's a sprocket. I'm just curious about something like that, because other people have asked me, can they make these parts? I'm like, I think they can do those things, so.
It depends on the material. So laser cutters will help with some, but not with all. I would say if you wanted to reach out to Dr. Vions to see if there's something that could be done. I do know within the manufacturing program that they, they do really measure, analyze the piece to be able to reproduce it if we're able to, because we do have the CNC machines and different things that we can do in manufacturing as well. At the high school level, typically not. But they do use the equipment to do it for other materials. That way, they can learn the process, so when they go to post-secondary or when they get in the job site, they have those skills.
I think this project, I'm thinking, it'd be a great challenge for your students. That's why I'm bringing this up, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think you do a great job out there. I was out there for graduation. There's a lot of happy people that walk across that stage, and anytime anyone asks me about a different career, I tell them, check into our local career technical education system. It's bar none the greatest.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Wright.
I just wanted to ask a question. In your presentation, you said that out of Anna Maria, we have an underwater robotics... I just wanted to ask a question. In your presentation, you said that, uh, out of Anna Maria, we have a underwater robotics.
We were able to purchase, uh, a robot that's underwater for, uh, scientific research as well as for STEM. Uh, and then there's a second program that's kind of like the VEX program that we do in middle schools, high schools, uh, to where they actually build this robot that will go underwater, and it's through a different company through Seamate. And that's something they're working on too. So it just showed up like maybe last week. So we need to give them time to get trained and put it together and whatnot. But, uh, anything that we can do to help support, uh, the education or the theme at the schools, uh, we always want the students to get excited about that with the opportunity.
I'm excited. That's great.
I'd love to see it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, Chairman. There's a proclamation. Are you ready for me to read that?
Yeah, you can. Yep.
Whereas, the month of February has, has been designated Career and Technical Education Month nationally by the Association for Career and Technical Education, and whereas the state of Florida officially recognizes career and technical education as playing an essential role in preparing students to prepare, to be career-ready with skills that provide for a productive life. And whereas the school district of Manatee County has established itself as a state and national leader in career and technical education by offering vigorous and engaging courses of study in its elementary, middle, and high schools, and through nationally renowned Manatee Technical College. And whereas, the success of CTE programs in Manatee, Manatee County has resulted in district students dominating and state and national competitions, including TSA, HOSA, and Skills USA events. And whereas, the school district of Manatee County is home to the very first WAZed Pathway School in Florida, and one of the first in the nation at Palm View K eight. And whereas, the school district of Manatee County is home to the very first Garnell Holt Animatronics Program in Florida, and one of the first in the nations e- on the east coast. Whereas, the school district of Manatee County has more than four hundred teachers and staff devoted to providing the resources to prepare students with the technical skills to succeed in both careers and post-secondary education, while meeting and exceeding local workforce needs. Now, therefore, be proclaimed by the School Board of Manatee County that the month of February twenty twenty-three shall be known, designated, and set aside as Career and Technical Education Month in Manatee District Schools. Adopted with a quorum present and voting this twentieth day of February twenty twenty-three.
I just want to, uh, by the way, uh, Mark Nanny, the gentleman who was, uh, speaking there, uh, I knew since he was a young boy, uh, his mother, Margie Nanny, was my boss when I first came to the school district, so. And I just saw last week that, uh, uh, she's still involved with, uh, uh, like TSA. I saw her in one of the photos of our students, uh, uh, receiving awa- awards there last week. Uh, but, uh, we have a good news moment. As you know, we have a good news page. Uh, Melissa Parker, uh, our communications specialist and Manatee Schools Television, M S T V, do an excellent job of, uh, keeping, uh, our community, our employees, and, uh, uh, everyone informed about great things taking place in our schools. Just wanted to share this moment with you. Uh, so if, we'll run this video and, uh, let you see it.
Welcome to the eleventh annual Excellence in Education Award, where we celebrate the Educator of the Year and Support Employee of the Year for the School District of Manatee County.
And the award goes to Brianna Hall.
Congratulations to Brianna Hall.
I'm gonna be real honest with you. They told us to prepare a speech. I did not. I did not. This is not a thing I expected to happen. I didn't even think I'd get up here to the four, so it's pretty cool. Thank you.
And the award goes to Kelly Smith Williams.
Congratulations, Kelly Smith Williams.
I am humbled to accept this award without my incredible parents, who are both amazing educators, and my incredible supportive husband and children, Jordan Iskeneva. The students of Manatee County are doing incredible, amazing things every day, and I'm privileged to be a part of their journey tonight.
Now I have the honor of introducing Superintendent Cynthia Saunders to close out our amazing evening.
I congratulate the winners, but really our students are the winners. We have amazing educators, and this is just a small representation of what our kids see each and every day. We're so blessed. We're so grateful. Thank you for being here and giving your time, your dedication to the talents in Manatee County. I thank you. God bless and good night.
Thank you. Again, we just wanted to share that with you, and, and those of y'all who were there know what a wonderful evening that was. I think nobody in the state puts on a better, uh, uh, you know, celebration of our Educator of the Year and Support Employee of the Year than we do. And I just want to, uh, mention Deborah Perry Gambino. She's our community engagement specialist. Her and her team brought this whole event together, so, uh, just thank you. That's it.
All right. Uh, my apologies for being late. Thank you, Ms. Spray, for taking over. Car problems at Boys and Girls Club Board Meeting this morning, so, uh, I've got here as quickly as possible, so thank you very much for working with me. Uh, brings us to number nine, public comment. I don't believe we have any public comments that nobody signed up. So moving to, um, number ten, reports and presentations. Rachel Sellers and Jay Glover for the presentation on Certificates of Participation. And Ms. Rinaldi, sorry.
Good morning. Uh, this is kind of a, a, a two-phase presentation. I'm gonna present to you why we need the money, and then Rachel is gonna present to us how we're gonna get the money. So I'm gonna talk specifically about the four COPs projects that we, um, have in the works and under design. We're looking, uh, these projects are budgeted right at a hundred and thirty-five, uh, million dollars as they presently stand. Um, all the projects, we've selected the architects, and we've selected the construction managers at this point. We're at about thirty to forty percent, um, into design. Uh, so we'll be, uh, individually speaking with you as we get to somewhere around the fifty percent to show you what the designs are. I'll have some work scheduled for this summer, uh, and some work scheduled, actually, uh, for upcoming spring break. We're gonna be moving some portables at Tara that's on the board meeting today as well. So we are moving, getting everything ready for getting the GMPs to you probably in September, and then immediately starting construction at that point. Um, all are gonna be multi-phase projects, uh, because they are, we're gonna remain as active campuses. So we're gonna be bringing some temporary portables in. We're gonna be doing renovations in certain areas and then moving, uh, staff and students around the campus as we proceed with the projects as well. And we've been working very closely with the principals on that phasing as well to make sure that it's fairly smooth. First project is, uh, Hale Middle School. Um, it's forty-three point seven million dollars, and this is the only project that's kind of a combined-funded project. We also have an addition, a ten-classroom addition that we're gonna be using impact fee monies for. That addition cost is right at five point nine million dollars. We're gonna be adding two hundred and twenty student station onto the campus, so that's going to bring the capacity or the student station count on that, on that campus up to one thousand two hundred and eight, so a little bit over twelve hundred. Uh, in addition to that classroom addition, we're also gonna be renovating the entire campus. HVAC, new roofing, electrical, data, finishes, ceilings. Around a hundred and forty-nine thousand square feet is what we're gonna be updating, uh, during that project. The next project is Onico Elementary School. Uh, we went through the Castaldi with this, and they came back, and they did not allow us to demolish any of the existing buildings. Um, so we are doing some primarily renovation remodeling. But we are doing an addition on the front of the campus, which would be the southeast corner of the campus. We're gonna be adding, uh, administration. As you know, now administration is kind of centrally located on campus, which isn't ideal from a security standpoint. So we're gonna be doing an addition that includes an administration. And then we're also gonna be moving the media center forward as well, so that it's easily accessible for any after-hours events as well. As a result of that, we're gonna be remodeling the present administration building into two kindergarten classrooms and into a STEM lab as well. And then we're gonna be remodeling the media center into six classrooms as well. Uh, we do not anticipate adding, though we may add thirty or forty additional student stations with those additional classrooms that we add, but, uh, it's really not a, an effort to increase the capacity on that fairly small campus. Uh, we're gonna be renovating the remaining sixty-seven thousand square feet. Uh, we're gonna be doing, uh, HVAC, so air conditioning, electrical, finish upgrades, bringing, uh, addressing ADA issues that we have on that existing campus as well. One of the key issues that we have out at that campus is the amount of queuing that happens out on State Road Seventy. So we've actually reconfigured the queuing on campus for the vehicle drop-off and pickup. We've basically tripled, uh, the, the number of veh- vehicles that we can get on campus as well. So that was a big piece of that project as well. The next project is Tara Elementary School. Uh, once again, Castaldi came back, and they're not allowing us to demolish any of those existing buildings, even though they were, some of them were thirty-two years old. Well, all of them were thirty-two years old. So we're going, we're doing renovation and remodeling on that. Uh, we do have a very small four-classroom addition that we're doing, and we're doing it towards the front of the campus, between the administration building and one of the wings. And that kind of, uh, gives us a single, clearly defined point of entry, uh, for that campus as well. And it secures, uh, the front half of the campus for us as well. Uh, as a result of that, we're gonna be adding, uh, eighty student stations. Uh, we're gonna come up to, uh, seven hundred and eighty total student stations when we're complete with this project. We are gonna be renovation and remodeling HVAC, all the parts and pieces, redoing all of the roof systems as well. Around ninety-seven thousand square feet is going to be renovated and remodeling there. And this is another one that, uh, we're looking to get, uh, vehicles off Linger Lodge, uh, road as well. And we come close to tripling the amount of vehicles that we can get on the, the campus with the new site design as well. And once again, that's a very small fifteen-acre campus. And then finally, the fourth project is, um, Blackburn Elementary, which we kind of started, uh, last summer. Um, at this point, right now, uh, we have vacated building number one, and Castaldi allowed us to demolish building number one and building number six. Um, right now, uh, we're, we're gonna be modifying the design capacity for that campus to six hundred students. But we're looking to have the ability to do an addition to bring them up to seven hundred and eighty where they are right now. And with the core facilities that are presently in building one, the administration, dining, kitchen, we are gonna be designing that for seven hundred and eighty students. Uh, just initially, right off the bat, we're gonna be putting si- uh, classroom capacity for six hundred student stations there. Um, the admin or building number one is gonna have administration, our media, dining and kitchen, art and music. So all those are gonna be in the new structure that we're doing there. And then we're gonna be renovating approximately forty-five thousand square feet as well. Uh, one of the key issues is, and we've been asked multiple times, we are not building within the footprint of old building number one because of the termite issues that we have there. We're actually encapsulating and putting a parking lot over top of it. So hopefully, uh, we won't have any future termite issues there as well. So those are the four projects that make up the hundred and thirty-five million, and I'll turn it to Ms. Sellers right now to introduce her to you.
Good morning. I'm Rachel Sellers, and, um, as Joe had, uh, mentioned, the four projects are gonna be funded by, um, the district executing a Certificates of Participation Series twenty twenty-three A. And to go over exactly what the Certificates of Participation are gonna do, I'm going to present, uh, Jay Glover. He is, um, the financial advisor with P F M that we are working with. And, um, he's gonna give you a debt overview of this particular COP series.
Thanks, Chair. School Board Member Superintendent Jay Glover from P F M Financial Advisors LLC. Uh, we are the district's financial advisor on debt-related matters, and we thought we'd begin the presentation. And let me just see if I can figure out how to. Perfect. Um, thought we'd begin the presentation by just giving a brief market update before we get into this district's debt itself and the Certificates of Participation. For anybody that follows the financial markets, which I'm assume all of you do, there's, uh, there's no hiding that interest rates are higher than they were, say, a year, two years ago. Um, what this, uh, table shows on the left is what we call the M M D triple-A G O curve. So that is the proxy for tax-exempt municipal debt with a triple-A credit rating, which is the highest credit rating. And you can see the yellow line is where interest rates were a year ago. And then the clustered lines that are their different colors is where they've been a week ago, a month ago, and currently. So you can see that rates have risen, in particular on the short end of the yield curve. We're in an inverted yield curve situation right now, where short-term rates are essentially as high as long-term rates. And what does that show from a historical perspective? On the right-hand side, and this is a lot going on. So those beige bars show the bandwidth of where rates have been over the last ten years. So the highest and lowest rates have been over the last ten years. And you can see the bottom blue bar, a year ago, they were near historic all-time lows. But while rates have risen, they're still, I would say, just slightly higher than your ten-year averages, especially in the part of the yield curve where we're talking about borrowing money today, which is within fifteen to twenty years. So we're not planning to go out the full thirty years. We're really gonna be in that part of the curve where it actually dips down. So the inverted yield curve actually will be favorable to you all when we actually access the capital markets. With that, I'll just turn to a brief overview of the existing debt that the district has. And the good news here is you actually have very little debt, and it's been a number of years since we've actually accessed the capital markets for new money needs. So you have a lot of flexibility. Uh, you have four outstanding series of Certificates of Participation. Uh, they total about a hundred and twenty-four million dollars. And the graph here just shows what the annual repayments are. They're essentially about fourteen million dollars through twenty twenty-nine. And then they drop down to about five million dollars, and then again drop down in twenty thirty-one to four million dollars. So all of your outstanding COPs will be paid off within ten years, which gives you a lot of financing flexibility when we're looking at financing these projects, as well as potential projects in the future that might come down the line. Uh, one thing we look at in terms of payments is you all levy one point five mils for capital. So that can be used to make lease payments on your Certificates of Participation and also pay for projects on a pay-as-you-go basis. And of that one point five mils, the district only uses point two-three mils to make lease payments on their outstanding debt. So that's a very low number. There are many districts that approach the one mil level in terms of lease payments, which gives them very little flexibility for pay-as-you-go projects. So of the one point five mils, you're only using point two-three mils. And we'll get into this, but even after adding the new Certificates of Participation, you'll still have a lot of flexibility moving forward. The only other piece of debt outstanding is related to your voter-approved sales tax. So you've done one financing, uh, secured by sales tax revenues in two, twenty seventeen. There's about ninety-eight million dollars left outstanding. And in terms of sales tax, we look at debt service coverage ratio. So we look at how much sales tax are collected and compare that to your outstanding debt service. So right now, you're collecting about forty-seven million dollars of sales tax revenues. Uh, that's what's budgeted for twenty twenty-three, and your annual debt service payment is about twelve point seven million dollars. million dollars. So, that's a three-point-seven-one times debt service coverage ratio, which is a very strong ratio, and again, gives you significant flexibility in terms of using those sales tax revenues for pay-as-you-go projects. So, both on your COPS program and your sales tax program, you really have very little debt and are well below sort of the legal limits that you could have if you wanted to issue more debt. One thing I do like to mention, we're talking about debt, the school board, the elected officials, you all, staff, have been pretty proactive about taking advantage of market opportunities to lower your annual debt service payment. So, really, I've been in this business for twenty-two years. Up until about last year, we've been on a downward trend in terms of interest rates. Every time we said rates can't go lower, they continue to go lower. And with that comes opportunities to refund outstanding debt, which the district has done quite frequently, really four times over the last ten years, resulting in about fifteen million dollars worth of debt service savings. So, while you have very little debt outstanding, we have taken advantages of rates of decline to actually lower the interest rates and save on debt service, again, increasing the amount of capital funding available for other projects and not going toward interest payments. I won't necessarily go over this slide, this is just the information that Mr. Rinaldi just went over outlining the various projects. So, as we transition to the 2023 COPS, which are on your agenda today as the school board and the leasing corporation, these are the four projects that we're looking to finance. And as your financial advisor, we continually work with staff looking at various financing options that we think will suit your needs moving forward. So, just to summarize the four financing options that we're still looking at, when we're looking at options, we're really looking at sort of today and into the future. So, we want to make sure we structure a financing that minimizes your financing costs, so minimizes the amount of interest that you repay, but also gives you flexibility moving forward for additional capital projects that might come about in the next five to ten years, and also gives you flexibility to maintain sufficient capital outlay millage above and beyond your lease payments to make debt service. So, you say, "Well, why don't we pay it off over five years?" Well, the payments would be so high that that would really compromise your ability to have ongoing pay-as-you-go projects. So, really, the four options we're looking at are fifteen- and twenty-year repayment structures, which again, are very conservative. A lot of districts finance their projects over twenty-five or more years, and legally, you're able to do that because these are long-lived assets, but we really want to minimize the interest cost. So, we're looking at fifteen- and twenty-year structures to do that, really, in particular in this interest rate environment where we do have that inverted yield curve, where the rates drop down in that range. So, we look at wrap structures, which wrap around your existing debt service, and we also look at level debt service structures, which are kind of level on a standalone basis. And on the following few pages, we'll go through each one of these, and I know this is getting a little bit into the weeds, but we thought this might be beneficial for you all to see. So, again here, this is what we call a fifteen-year wrap structure. So, you can see the blue bars, that represents the repayment of the proposed COPS issuance, and it wraps around your existing debt service to create a more level aggregate structure. So, again, we highlight a few key points here. Three-point-five-three percent all-in true interest cost under this structure with about fifty million dollars worth of net interest cost, and this would only utilize about point-three-five mils of your one-point-five capital outlay millage. So, you can see, still very low in terms of capital outlay millage. And just kind of keep this graph a little bit in your head. So, this is the wrap structure. This is the level structure, excuse me, this is the twenty-year wrap structure. So, now, we've extended the debt out twenty years, and again, wrapping around the existing debt service. Extending out to twenty years increases your net interest amount to seventy-three million dollars. So, you can see significantly more interest cost taking it out to twenty years, and a higher interest rate, three-point-nine-nine percent. So, you're paying it off over a longer period of time, just like if you had a mortgage on your home, if you did it over fifteen years versus twenty, twenty-five, thirty years, you're going to pay a higher interest rate and more interest over time. So, same thing with this COPS financing, but still here, you're at point-three-five mils in terms of your capital outlay millage. So, those are the wrap structures. So, those really defer the principal beyond where your current COPS are being repaid. And if you move to the more level structure, this shows a fifteen-year level, so your blue bars are now essentially the same in every year for fifteen years. This will have the lowest overall interest cost, thirty-seven million dollars worth of interest will be repaid, and the lowest interest rate of three-point-four-zero percent. The one downside to this is it does use point-four-four mils in terms of your capital outlay millage, because you have higher payments where your existing COPS are. So, your payments get up to about twenty-five million dollars in aggregate versus if I go back to the level, you know, they stay about twenty million dollars. So, there's about five million of additional payments by doing that level structure over fifteen years. And then, the final structure we look at is the twenty-year level debt service. So, the same here, the blue bars over twenty years, you're going to pay fifty-eight million dollars worth of interest cost, three-point-eight-six percent interest, and point-four-one mil. So, again, your level debt service structures are going to increase the millages for capital outlay, because you're paying higher debt service where your existing COPS are. So, again, these are the options that we're still analyzing for you all. A lot will depend on sort of the market conditions when we actually go to enter to the market, but we're probably leaning toward the shorter structure, maybe raptor level to minimize interest cost. I mean, I think in today's market, that's probably the most beneficial, but we're still working through from a budget perspective whether the wrap versus the level might make most sense. In terms of what you're being asked to consider today, and Ritesh Patel from Neighbors, Giblin, Nickerson, your special tax counsel, is in the house as well and can address any legal questions you all have, but you all sit as the school board and the leasing corporation on these financings. So, you're going to be asked to approve two resolutions today. And within those resolutions, there's some parameters that we must meet in order to move forward, and those four parameters are a not-to-exceed par amount of a hundred-and-thirty-five million dollars, again, to fund the projects that were discussed, a not-to-exceed underwriter's discount of point-four percent of the par amount. So, the underwriter is actually the firm that places the bonds with the investors in the marketplace, and they get paid a takedown to do that. So, we minimize that takedown within the resolution, a not-to-exceed interest cost of five percent, obviously, based on our projections, we're well below that, but want to give ourselves some cushion, because we are in a very volatile market condition, as was hit here today. And then, a not-to-exceed final maturity of July one, 2043. So, that would give us the ability to go out to the full twenty years if that was advantageous to you all. Again, assuming we get approval here today, we're ready to move fairly expeditiously with procuring ratings and getting prepared to price. Right now, we're not scheduled to price these bonds until May the ninth, but if market conditions warrant moving that up to take advantage of a good situation, we're going to be able to do that. That's one of the reasons why we're here today and didn't want to wait to get approval. We think it's advantageous in a market conditions like we're in. It's very volatile. Every week, a new economic data comes out, a new inflation report comes out, rates go up, rates go down. So, we wanted to get before you all early on, get approval to move forward, and then, as your financial advisor, that gives us flexibility to recommend when the most opportune time to get into the market is. So, it might be a little earlier than that May ninth date, we might get to May ninth and think we want to wait a week or two, but that's really setting up Mr. Rinaldi to get the funds that he needs to start the projects, as was mentioned, the summer timeframe of this year. So, that's really the presentation I have. I'm here to address any questions you all might have, and as I mentioned, Ritesh Patel is here as well if any legal questions might come up also.
I do have one speaker, thank you for your presentation. I do have one speaker listed, and that's Ms. Bray.
Okay.
And Mr. Tatum after.
This is a whole lot of data to go through. With Mr. Rinaldi, if I could ask you a couple of questions about the projects that we're talking about, specifically, all of these schools, Hale, Onico, Terra, Blackburn, they're all, we keep referring to the Castaldi, the Castaldi, how many years old they are, and that sort of thing. We're doing all of these renovations. Once they peak that fifty-year mark of tearing down or whatever, where are we going to be then? I mean, that's only fifteen years, right? You said some of these buildings are, are how old?
Well, right now, some of the buildings are early thirties, thirty-two years old. And, I mean, with going through the Castaldi process with DOE, you have to be in excess of thirty-five, somewhere around thirty-five to forty years old before they will allow you to do any demolition. But, we feel obviously Blackburn was a critical one. Terra, we were concerned, but we've been able to come up with a plan that actually works fairly well, and we were able to get the onsite circulation for the vehicles that we needed, because what we thought was we would need to move buildings around and demolish buildings in order to get the capacity that we needed for vehicles onsite, but it has worked out, so, and kudos to the designers for those. But, so, it's been tough, because these are all some of our smaller campuses, Onico, Terra, I mean, you're around fifteen acres, so, where typically an elementary school is twenty acres plus, so.
Okay. Because my, I guess, my balance, question to balance this is, we have a COPS plan that goes out fifteen years, twenty years even, but the building itself, some of these buildings itself are older. I, you know, is DOE going to come back sometime and say, "Hey, this building's too old, you need to tear it down?", because we're going to invest quite a bit of money here in these campuses. I don't, that's my basic question.
No, DOE's expectation is when we do a renovation and remodeling, that it's going to have a thirty-five-year lifespan. If we do new construction, it's going to be fifty years.
All right.
And that's kind of the metric that they use.
And then, I'll meet with you sometime, because I do have some requests on some of these schools or details I'd like to talk to you about on the design, but other than that. And then, financially, when I'm looking at this market curve, it's going in, and I'm guessing on your page one, that curve, is that taking us out to 2029? Is that what that is at the bottom of your graph? There, that one.
Oh, no, that's...
The bottom, I don't know what that...
Yeah, no, that's a thirty-year curve.
Thirty-year curve, okay.
Both these show a thirty-year interest rate curve.
That's the year.
Yeah, so, if you see really through the fifteen-year mark where it dips down, is where we're kind of more focused on where your interest rates would be. And that's one of the reasons why a fifteen-year structure works well in this market versus another market, no longer term, might work well.
And, we're locked into the rate that you get, whether that be two weeks from now or May ninth? We're locked into that for that fifteen-year or...
That's a great question. So, generally, there will be a call option on these bonds, as they are with most of your outstanding, I say bonds, COPS, I use that term interchangeably. So, this will likely have a ten-year par call. So, you'll be able to actually refinance this in the future if interest rates decline. That's the same thing that we've done when I highlighted, I guess, this page here. Most debt that's done in the municipal market, for ten years, it's non-callable, and then it's callable after that. So, we will get a bite of the apple to have lower interest rates in the future if that is appropriate at that time.
Okay. That was my biggest question. Thank you.
Mr. Tatum?
Yes, good morning.
Morning.
Thank you. So, help us understand again why we should use COPS from a financial standpoint, rather than, you know, typically borrowing money, then we have to pay interest. That might seem to some people that that's not a good idea. If you have cash on hand, why not just use it? But, can you help us understand why the COPS are actually the better way to go?
Yeah, I mean, generally, people use debt to build large capital projects, because the ability to generate cash to fund the full construction cost is just not there. I mean, if you continue to wait to save money until you have enough money in hand to build all these projects, the cost of construction is obviously potentially going up, and you never really catch up, quite frankly. So, that's really the main reason, I would say. It also gives the ability for, you know, future generations that will be using these assets to actually contribute toward the repayment of those, as opposed to putting the full burden on the current taxpayer. Again, these are assets that have long useful lives. Future taxpayers, as they pay their capital outlay millage, will also contribute toward the repayment of those. So, just in general financial terms, those are really the two reasons most issuers use debt, and it's very common, quite frankly, for school districts to use this type of financing vehicle. And quite frankly, the district's been, I'd say, very frugal with their assets, which is a good thing, and done very little debt in the past. So, you know, I think there's some potential legal reasons why you might issue COPS as well, but those are the financial reasons that I would state.
Okay, so, basically, just as an example, if you take Blackburn Elementary School here on your presentation, which is slide number six, and in today's estimated costs, and it says we're going to start that this summer, it's about thirty million dollars. And so, it makes more financial sense now to borrow the money and even pay interest on that money, rather than wait four or five years to start construction, because maybe in four or five years, it might cost fifty million dollars to build this school. And so, even though we'd like this, you know, normally, you save money, then you pay cash, so to speak, in these type of situations, even with the interest payments, whoever does these calculations has decided that it's, makes more financial sense. It costs less actually over the long term to borrow now and pay some interest, rather than wait and pay a higher price later.
There's a present value nature to that as well, but yeah, I mean, I think, and I'm not a construction person, so I know everything costs more today. I can't tell you what these schools are going to cost five years, but I can tell you, if we were doing this two or three years ago, they would probably be a lot less than they are now. I mean, so, that is exactly right. I mean, if you continue to wait to collect the cash, you likely never catch up and get to the point where you can do this number of schools. If it was just one school, that might be able to be done, but when you're talking about four schools, and also, keep in mind, there's other demands on that capital outlay millage and those sales tax proceeds that you get in. So, this is not the only thing you'd be collecting for. There's other ongoing projects that are being done on a pay-as-you-go basis. So, again, your mix in terms of what you're debt financing versus what you're using pay-as-you-go is very low, and that is most illustrated best by essentially, you know, this page. You're using point-two-three mils to make lease payments. So, most of your projects are being done on a pay-as-you-go basis. You know, so, legally, you can use up to seventy-five percent of your capital outlay millage to make lease payments. So, legally, you can issue up to one-point-one-two-five mils, and I will tell you, there are districts, and I'm giving a bit of a history lesson that you all know, this used to be two mils, and the bogey was one mil for lease payments. Well, at the same time, the legislature reduced it to one-point-five mils, assessed values also tanked, and there were districts that were approaching using almost their entire capital outlay millage to make lease payments. You know, manatee never got there. They obviously have been very conservative, and now that assessed values are growing again, point-two-three mils, don't quote me on this, I know I'm on a microphone, I'm sure of people that have COPS, it's one of the lowest millage levies in the state. We represent the majority of the district in the state. It's one of the lowest in terms of actually lease payments used by your capital outlay millage. So, I guess that was a bit long-winded, but I hope that helped address your question.
Well, that was good. And for people who are interested, now I'm going to try and pull out some of the knowledge that I got from this financing course that I went to lately. The one-point-five mil tax, and I don't know if you're next behind this, if somebody else needs to answer the question, that's fine, is actually a tax that is imposed by the school board without necessarily the voters voting on it. And it is, and if we want, and the maximum that we can impose is one-point-five mils, and if we want state money to enhance this one-point-five mil tax, we have to impose the one-point-five mil tax as a school board without, that's not a tax that voters decide on. Am I explaining that correctly? Wow, that money, I went to that course, must have been worth it.
Yeah, it was good.
Okay, great. Because I think it's important for people, when you hear about all these taxes, maybe people are thinking, "I don't remember voting on a one-point-five mil tax", but they, the public didn't, it's just imposed by us, and to get money from the state, we actually have to, have to get, have to impose that tax. Okay, do we, so, when we borrow this money, do we actually get, do we invest it, or like, how quickly do, so you get this money, it comes into a big account, "Wow, look at that, we got a big bank account." Do we invest the money while it's sitting there waiting to pay the contractors and the construction people?
Yeah, that's a great question, and the one good thing... And the one good thing about the inverted yield curve and the higher interest rates is, while that money is being invested, you'll earn significant interest on that. So the district has a separate investment advisor that will work with the district. They'll look at the draw schedule for those projects. The funds will be spent over two or three years. So they'll structure a portfolio that ladders securities out to meet that draw schedule. So you'll earn, and I don't quote, I, I'm not gonna throw out a number, but you'll, you'll invest a hundred and thirty-five million dollars essentially. Some of it will be remain very liquid up, you know, liquid money to be spent. But again, liquid money has a higher rate now than sort of long-term money. So the good news with the inverted yield curve is, yes, you will invest those funds, and they'll be earning significant interest, probably in excess of four percent in today's market. So you'll invest taxably at a higher rate than you're actually gonna borrow at. So that brings into an equation, and I'm really getting in the weeds. You have to monitor that because the IRS does not let you keep what's called positive arbitrage. They don't like you to borrow tax-exempt, invest taxably, and keep that money. So there's a consultant that will come in and make sure that that money is appropriately being invested, and that any excess earnings are actually rebated back to the IRS if you don't spend the money quick enough. So again, that's really in the weeds, but a great question. And one of the main advantages of a higher interest rate environment, especially an inverted yield curve, is those investment earnings will be substantially more than they have been historically.
Got, got all that, Ms. Sellers? Okay, good, because I don't wanna go to jail with the IRS and all that kind of stuff. It's hard to vote from jail.
I don't either, so.
So in looking at the slide number seven, this is the COPS summary. The, I was curious about the interest payments, which is line one, two, three, four, net interest payment. And seeing that our, whatever, percentage of the one point five mil is low, I think you said it's only point two-three percent right now?
Certainly point two-three percent, yes.
So if we, uh, if we use option three there, which is the fifteen year level structure, again, that math is coming in handy for me, point six-seven percent, that's still pretty low. Would you say that's relatively low?
Point four-four mils is still very low in the grand scheme of things, yes.
But if we added it to the point two-three, we would have an-
Oh, that's not, you don't add it, that's inclusive of it.
Oh, that's inclusive of it.
Total payments would be point four-four mils. So if you're just looking at that specific structure.
So why would, because that's like twelve million dollars less in interest payments than the other options. Why would we?
We very well might do that structure. I said that one potential downside is shown here, is your annual payments would be twenty-five million dollars in those first six years, um, which would be less pay-as-you-go money for the district to use. So that's really when we look at the budget, we weigh, see the fifteen year RAP. You're wrapping around, you're putting a lot of the debt service out on the long end, so your payments are essentially twenty million dollars in those early years versus the twenty-five million dollars in that. So that's the one downside. So we'll really be looking at the RAP and the level structure and looking within sort of the capital budget, not just today, but what it is over the next few years to make sure that it can withstand that increase in debt service to twenty-five million dollars. So that's, that's sort of the, what, the, the push and pull that we go through leading up to the pricing.
Okay. And then eventually, you come back to us, back to us with your recommendation, and then we, we vote on that at some point, or is this?
No, not, no, this is the action. So we put together parameters within the resolution, and if we meet those parameters, we move forward. And then the only subsequent action would be the chair and the superintendent and the attorneys and things would be signing the legal papers after we priced the bonds.
Okay. So how will you make that, I mean, there's lots of factors that go into it. Uh, how will you make the decision whether we wanna pay twenty-five million dollars for the first five years and only have thirty-eight million dollars of interest payments, or use some other option, which requires significantly more interest payments? But I mean, what are, what are the factors that go? Because if, just to the layperson, it seems like that's the better option to save the twen- the twelve million dollars in interest.
Well, it's the same decision I would say you would go through if you went out to get a mortgage for your house. You're gonna look at, do I need to get a thirty-year mortgage because I wanna stretch the payments out longer and have less cash flow upfront? Versus do I wanna do a fifteen-year mortgage, which is obviously gonna save me money over time, but it might limit my ability to buy other things I might need within my budget? So ideally, we would all have ten or fifteen-year mortgages on our houses. But from a cash flow perspective, that's not realistic for some people, given the other demands on that. So that's the same thing, there's other demands on that capital outlay millage. So we wanna make sure we leave enough flexibility to meet those demands, but also minimize the interest cost. So again, we're still working through that. We wanted to present you all the options and kind of give you some thought as to how we work through those things. But it's the same exact decision you might go through as you're looking at how long you can pay your mortgage back.
So how do you, how do you know what the demands are? Do you work with the school system and?
Yeah, we work with your finance staff and superintendent on sort of the long-term capital budget, looking at what future projects are. We talked to Mr. Rinaldi, like, you know, there's four projects. You know, is there gonna be four more projects in five years that need to get done? And all that will go into account. Because we wanna make sure we have flexibility to not just do this deal, but also do future deals in, in, in the future.
Now, we, we also have a point five mil sales tax in the county, which was voted on by the voters. And that's for fifteen years, and it expires in twenty thirty-two. Is that correct?
Yeah, it's not a, it's a, it's a half penny. Yeah, and it, it's, it's right here, so.
It's not a mil, really. Okay, and so how does that affect all of this?
It's another source of capital funding. So all of it's built into the capital budget. You make payments on your sales tax bonds, which are about twelve point seven million dollars. And then you have about, uh, what would be my math? Thirty-five million dollars worth of annual sales tax collections above and beyond that. It all fits into the capital budget. So you have sales tax revenues, and you have capital outlay millage. And that's how you fund your COPS program, your sales tax debt, and your pay-as-you-go program. I can assure you that every penny is spent every year. There's actually money, and I'm getting a little bit out of my lane here, that you transfer from the capital fund to the general fund for eligible expenses like property and casualty insurance and other things like that. So all of that's sort of built into the capital planning process we go through.
And is our plan based on the fact that the point five cent sales tax will be renewed? Is that?
No, it's built on the fact that it will expire. I mean, we don't wanna assume in, you know, eight years that that will be renewed. But, um, you know, hopefully it will be if y'all seek that. But no, that's, that's not assumed from our, from our planning purposes.
Okay. Uh, let's see here. Could you just, again, help us understand the difference between RAP and LEVEL? Maybe just, maybe does RAP mean that you, you're, you, you take all the COPS that exist and just wrap them into one big package? And LEVEL is, it's a separate package from what we've already done?
Not necessarily. So the existing, and these, these are great questions. Uh, this is, this is, this stuff excites me, this is weird. But, um, um, you know, the, the, um, the existing COPS are what they are. We're not gonna do anything with them. So they're attractive interest rates, we've refinanced those. So those are the, I'll say, if I quickly just flip through those, these are the beige bars, they, they don't change from graph to graph. Oh, gosh, I just lost mine. So those are gonna stay just how they are. The difference between RAP and LEVEL is in a RAP structure, we're essentially deferring the principal repayment until after the existing COPS mature. So you can see out here on the long end, you have higher payments. So just looking at fifteen-year RAP, your payments, while the existing COPS are in place, are, say, twenty million dollars. And then they level off at seventeen point five million dollars thereafter. So if you can kind of keep that in your head, look at all the blue bars on the longer end are much higher. If you compare that to the LEVEL over fifteen years, those blue bars are all the same each year, essentially. So they're structured without regard to the existing debt. So your higher payments, twenty-five million dollars through twenty twenty-nine, and then it drops down to, say, eleven million dollars after that. So it really is deferring the principal repayment in the RAP, whereas the LEVEL, you start paying the principal off from day one. That's why you have a lower interest cost, because if you pay principal down, your debt service cost drops down.
Okay.
And it's a very common structure. This is not something, you know, out on the yield risk spectrum or anything. This is really still even, I would say, a twenty-year RAP structure is still very conservative in nature. Many issuers, especially school districts, are financing these types of products over twenty-five and thirty years even. So even sort of the longest date we're looking at is still on the short end of where most school districts amortize their debt.
Okay, thank you. And what is important about the date of May the ninth? I, maybe I missed that, why is that an important date? I, I heard that come up in the-
Uh, May the ninth is the date that we would actually, as the timetable is set out today, would be entering the market to lock the interest rate. So assuming we get approval today, there's a number of steps we need to go through. We're targeting May the ninth as the pricing date. So that's when the district uses its underwriter and says, we're gonna go out and sell the bonds, go out and get investors. That's the day the interest rates get locked in. So after that date, if rates go down or rates go up, you're, all your risk is off the table. But the reason we're here well in advance of that date is we think there could be an opportune time before then the market might be favorable. So we wanna be able to jump into the market more quickly. And that's really, of all that we do as your financial advisor, we have a fiduciary relationship to the district, is really to get you the lowest interest cost possible on that given day. And we'll recommend going into the market on the, on the most opportune day. And it can be tricky right now. I mean, you pick the wrong day, it can cost you significantly. So we wanna make sure we're timing it when, you know, there's little economic data. You wouldn't wanna go into the market the day the Federal Reserve is meeting, or the day that CPI or PPI indicators are coming out. Because those things move the market dramatically one way or another. So we wanna avoid a lot of that noise and drama and hopefully get in the market on a very stable day where investors are willing to buy your bonds.
And let's see, so the term callable, again, from a lay standpoint, when I hear the word callable, it means if I, if I'm a bank and I, I've loaned money to somebody, I can call it, which means gotta pay the money now, is that what that, is that really what it means?
It's the opposite for this term. So call option is on the district's behalf. So the district's the only one that has the option to call the bond. So, uh, when we say there's a ten-year call option, that means that ten years, the district can issue new debt to refinance existing debt. So for instance, if we locked in, just say for round numbers, a four percent interest rate today, or May the ninth, we get to that ten-year mark, and interest rates are three and a half, or three, or whatever they might be, we can actually issue new debt to pay the old loan off and have a debt outstanding with a lower interest rate. I keep going back to mortgages, just like you'd refinance your mortgage at a lower interest rate environment. That is the district's option. The investors are agreeing to hold these bonds for ten years at a fixed interest rate. They can trade them in the secondary market and do all of that, but that does not impact the district. So if the district wanted to have these bonds outstanding for the full fifteen-year term at the current interest rates, they could do that. So there's no puts, there's no balloons, there's none of that. It's strictly the district's option to call the bonds if market conditions are favorable.
So we can pay off, we could pay off our debt early, but we can't pay it off until the ten-year point, right? You can't pay it off in like seven years if?
Yeah, I mean, we're getting into the weeds a little bit. You could potentially escrow the funds to the call date, but in general, no. For the first ten years, you're locked in. And then after that, if you had cash, you could just pay the bonds off and they could be gone, or you could refinance.
And then my last question is, is this a type of municipal bonds? When we hear that term, is it, with these, the things that we're going to, the COPS, are they, do they fall into the category of municipal bonds, or?
I mean, in general, they are municipal bonds. I mean, school districts, and, and, and Retesh might be able to give a more eloquent legal answer. COPS are issued by school districts because you are limited in actually what you can pledge to repay debt. You don't have sales tax revenues, you don't have, well, you don't have non-adverum sales tax revenues like a city or county has to pledge the debt. So the COPS structure was created so that districts could leverage their capital outlay millage. So, and it's something that's been around for years and years, the Supreme Court's validated it. But it really is the financing method that all school districts in the state use to finance projects like this, um, without having to go to vote a referendum for a sales tax or a GO bond.
Great. Thank you, that's all I have, thank you.
I think, just real quick, just to piggyback on some of the stuff that Mr. Tatum said, it would, and I know you can't necessarily predict this, but it would be, it's, it's different in the sense of when we have this money waiting for the projects, it will be invested, you know, i- in, in our short-term, you know, markets that we use here with our own stuff. So essentially, we can borrow for nothing. I mean, essentially make the interest that we're gonna pay back anyways, maybe then something, hopefully.
Yeah, so I think what you're getting at is there is no cost to actually borrowing the money a little bit early, because you're actually gonna be earning more on those proceeds than you're paying in debt service while those proceeds are outstanding.
While, while, while I had the floor, just real quick before we go to Ms. Foreman. My, when we, this goes back to Ms. Rinaldi maybe a couple months ago. And I don't wanna be getting, I don't wanna start something all over again, but, uh, maybe even more than a couple months ago, this is probably six months ago, when they, when you, we thought a hundred million was gonna be enough. Obviously, construction has gone up, et cetera, and now it's one thirty-five. At that point, one of my recommendations was why, if we're only gonna go four million over what we're projecting right now at one thirty-one? And, and I know I don't wanna get into where the IRS is gonna come back, and we gotta get Retesh to come in and, and solve our problems. But if we can, why stop at one thirty-five, I guess is my question? If, if, um, and that may just be because we don't want to get into where we're making some profit on, on, obviously, debt. But you know what I mean, does that, why stop only four million? So it's only gonna give us, so let's just say we get these schools, let's say a year from now, we do see some more increase. I don't want to come back and say, or pull from our, from our normal out, capital outlay. So is it work to go to one forty instead of one thirty-five?
I think I can answer why we picked that number. When we came before the board a few years ago, it was at a hundred million, and it was for those projects. Because based on our capital forecast for five years, we had enough money to complete the other projects that we had. And the, that's kind of where the board felt comfortable. We did have the lending capacity to do more. We came back a year ago, and that hundred million went to a hundred and thirty million for just those projects because of the inflation of cost. When we now, and the reason we haven't come to actually execute the borrowing until today, we didn't wanna pay the debt by borrowing until it was time for construction. We could finance the architect fee within our capital budget, and we wanted to pull the trigger right when it was time to actually borrow. Because remember, when we first started the conversation, the interest rates were extremely low, and you have a, a period of time that the projects are supposed to last through. When we came before today and we started actually looking at the actual cost of the borrowing in the projects, it's now at a hundred and thirty-five. So back to Mr. Tatum's question, is it better to borrow or just pay as you go? The inflation now is around twelve percent. The borrowing is much less. To, so to complete the projects that we needed on hand, we were there. The only thing that I would say, uh, you know, I know that we have two existing, i- and the reason we're borrowing, we knew that our, our sales tax and other are gonna deal with growth of new schools. Our focus after we did that Jacob study was to ensure it's not just about building new schools, it's about maintaining our older schools in the same condition. So the goal was within that five-year plan to have those eight troubled buildings at that same level. We have two existing, we have this one, and we have Palmasola. If the board wanted to include Palmasola in the borrowing, move it up, we certainly could do that. That would increase the borrowing number, uh, that you had. But that's the why it was only these, why we only chose to borrow what we needed to for these. Because with our capital forecast, we did feel that, again, we do try to be conservative, that we felt that the dollars coming in would satisfy the district's growth and other needs. The only one that I would say that would, would be of consideration to move up if the board chose would be the Palmasola project. But that would increase the one thirty-five from beyond what that was.
If I might just add one thing, just, you know, the question about why we didn't borrow earlier. The IRS also has you set an expectation of how quickly the proceeds must be spent once a issue. So we couldn't have issued it two years ago, because you only have three years to spend the proceeds. So I just wanna point that out as well.
I mean, obviously hindsight would've been great to do it before, now I get five, but I got, obviously we can't. The government. Ms., Ms. Foreman.
Yeah, um, speaking of that, I think the last time we issued a COPS, we did run afoul of not spending it quickly enough. and had to scramble to find something that we did that qualified and redo the legal on, on that. So it was, it's not something that you want to do. And the audit committee evaluates the sales tax, and this was part of it. And so, so thank you to the audit committee on that. The, uh, I, I would appreciate it if somebody would help me understand what we did in October 2020 versus what we're doing today.
What we did then was we brought before the board the, the idea to move forward on borrowing for, for the, the COP's funding source. And the board approved that. So we moved forward with the planning stage of working on those projects. We are now at the point where we have to execute the, the borrowing of the money. And again, just, just as you stated, we didn't want to execute it then because we knew we weren't at the place where we could actually spend and be complete within three years. So now it's just formalizing what we approved two years ago.
So we did a resolution then, we're doing a resolution now, but we are also executing.
Correct. And, and updated the monies based on today's number versus what we started with.
Do we have a responsibility to revoke the prior resolution? That's a question for Mr. Dye, or, oh, great, we got lots of attorneys here, okay.
Good morning, Ritesh Patel, neighbors Giblin-Niggerson, your bond counsel. Which actually, that's a great question. There's actually, if you look at the school board resolution, if you look at, I think it's one of the very last section, section 20 or so. Yeah, section 20. So section 20, in fact, repeals the prior resolutions because these do conflict with them, because your amount, your borrowing amount is increased, and the parameters have changed that Jay talked about, the 4% interest or 5% interest rate, final maturity and things like that. So except for one particular purpose, which allows you to reimburse costs, we have, we do, these resolutions that you're going to approve today repeal the prior optimizations.
Right, okay, all right, thank you. Who's the underwriter?
It's Raymond James is the lead underwriter.
And, uh, what is our credit rating?
That's a Jay question.
Yeah, Ritesh was right on the end, they were, they were selected through a competitive RFP process, prior date. The credit rating, you're A category credit rating currently. So I think it's an A flat by one of the rating agencies. And historically, I think a lot of you know the district's financial position got quite deteriorated. You were in the triple B category for a while, but the actual, the ratings have been climbing up from that point. And, you know, the ratings move a lot slower going up than they do going down. So, you know, we're hopeful that as part of this process, we might even seek a credit rating upgrade for the district. Because I think the financials are better than what the credit rating actually shows right now. But that is really reflective of the historical financial position that the district was in, which seems like forever ago now, but, you know, the rating agencies have sort of long memories on that type of thing.
Oh, we're an A flat?
Yes.
All right. We need to get that up, okay. The, uh, I ju, I do want to point out, you know, I, I have turned 180 degrees on this, on borrowing versus pay as you go. Nobody nowadays can buy a house or build a new house for their first time without, without borrowing. And watching what has happened in the market, you know, interest rates, inflation, it's, hindsight is 2020, but would love to have gotten underway on some of these others. Therefore, when we vote on this, I would like to see us move Palmasola up. Okay? I would like to increase the amount of the COPS. And yesterday, we attended the architect meeting on the K8. And, oh my, we may have a certain amount, causing consternation here, you know, sorry.
I guess, I guess my question, just to go back to what you just said, I don't know, I mean, how comfortable are we to do that right this minute? Or is that something we got to come back with and say, uh, what you were saying about to add?
I think we had a tentative price on Palmasola. You know, I, I think we can amend and, and add that to the 135 if, if the board so chooses.
Cause that's where I have. From a legal perspective, I mean, we can modify the parameters. I think it's just a matter of how much, we would need to modify it by any of the other concerns.
If you have an idea, Joe, of what, what dollar amount Palmasola would be coming at, then we could.
Hold on one sec, I just want to hear. Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, with the preliminary estimates, we were close to what was originally budgeted out in year 27, 28, and was around $22 million in order to do the, uh, the level of upgrade. Now, keep in mind, that is a campus of 60, of 600 students with a core of 750 for a future expansion too. So it's reducing the size of that campus. That, that got us down to the $22 million.
You're, you're saying the original, the 22 million was for 600 kids? But what, what we looked at the other day was dropping down to 500?
Yeah, excuse me, you're right, yeah, it was down to 500, yes.
For like 19.5? And, but the original, back in the capital plan budget was 22 million for about 600 kids?
Exactly, a slight reduction.
And my understanding is it was, if we rebuilt to the 700 or whatever that they have now, it was going to be about 40 million, is that correct?
Yeah.
And whereas we had only budgeted 22 million. If we put a price, or put an amount in this COPS, and we say, say we do 40 million and we only spend 25, can that other 15 million go to the other projects that are within the COPS? I know we have to stay within the, the bounds of the COPS.
Yeah.
So we, you can, we don't have to, okay, all right. Yeah, I just want to point out to the board, yesterday, talking about the new K through 8, the increase in construction costs is really scary. It's going to cost us a lot more than our cap, our five-year capital plan, is that correct?
Yeah.
As it's shown right now, we have for construction, we have 79 million for the overall budget, 65 million for construction. And we heard ranges from mid 70s to one was in the high 90s. So it was kind of all over the place, but yeah, we're, we're looking, I mean, as we get that architect on board, we're going to look very closely at the budget and figure out what, what we need to do to keep it hopefully within that 65 million. If not, then we're going to have to address that.
Chair, Joe?
Yes, go ahead.
If you chose to put Palmasola in the COPS, that does free up capital in the five-year capital plan for the other. So we would then go back and readjust those dollars for this to apply where it's needed in the other projects. And as stated, if you went on the higher end for Palmasola, we, we haven't got to that point yet as far as we are with the others, those dollars would be allowed to be used within the COPS. And if you didn't, you don't have to spend all of it. It just gives you that amount to spend up to.
Right.
Okay, I'll, I'll be reckless and sa, and suggest that we add 40 million to the COPS for Palmasola.
I just have a question for that.
And we're not making, this, this is a presentation, it's not a, uh.
Yeah, you're not making a recommendation.
Not a vote, yeah.
I'm not making a motion, but I will if, if it's.
Let's go through them.
Okay.
We got Ms. Bray and then Ms., did you pull your name off?
I can't decide.
Okay.
Go ahead, Ms. Bray.
Mine would be for Mr. Rinaldi. If we added, because we, we've had discussion about being able to pay it back without, you know, with Ms. Foreman saying the audit committee called that we have to hurry up and spend this money. My, my issue is if we do add Palmasola to this project, are we going to be able to manage all of that within the timelines? Cause that's four, that's some pretty big projects that we're talking about.
The, the time issue that we had with these four projects is we had not gone through Castaldi yet. And Castaldi grew from a three-month period up at DOE to nine months plus. We've already gone through Castaldi on Palmasola. So we would immediately put our RFQ out for an architect and a CM, and that major hurdle, we've already jumped over right now. So we're in pretty good shape time-wise for Palmasola.
And in your estimation, to Ms. Foreman's conversation, we're going to reduce the size of student stations at Palmasola rather than, because I know there's a lot of growth going on out there. And I just fear that if we reduce.
There's no growth going on with this school as, I mean, I know there's going to be growth southwest, but that's not going to affect Palmasola.
Well, Palmasola is a pretty good school. I'm thinking that maybe people may opt to take their child to Palmasola. So you have to look at that as well, because how many students are bussed? A dozen, half a dozen? Okay, so it's a, it's a good school. So in my opinion, take advantage of that, because you're going to have parental choice. And some people might choose to go there opposed to the other ones. But that would be my concern is, I'm not so sure if we would want to reduce down to the 500 student stations, but at least go up a little.
And when we go to programming, we, we can look at that, look at some different options.
Yeah, I mean, we need to look at the, not just now, the 20 years from now, what it's going to look like too. So.
I, I don't think today's the time.
Okay, I understand, but.
Of the, of the level of Palmasola.
Right.
I do think of range.
But it does cost.
I was for, almost a year ago, I was for 150 million to do it. Because why not, right? And, and so, because we're going to, it's, it's not going to cost us. So I'm, I'm, I'll let you do it here in a second. We got a couple more people, Mr. Tatum and the Ms. Messenger.
She doesn't have, Ms. Messenger hasn't had a, but, whoever you want, okay.
Do you, he's ladies first.
I keep clicking and not.
You're on and off, I know, you're confusing.
Somebody will say something, I'm like, oh, I want to respond, but I'm like, I, I don't want to go off the rails and talk about Palmasola, because I don't, I feel like that's like a whole conversation when we talk about the capital budget, to me. And we're not there yet, and I don't want to make some knee-jerk reaction, because we really haven't had the conversation or where we wanted. I'm, I'm in favor of moving it up, but that doesn't necessarily mean we make, I'm looking at our capital budget, we bring in total revenues is 180 million dollars is projected for next year. That's what I'm reading. So I do believe we'd be able to manipulate what we have. I'm in favor of increasing, if that's something that's possible, I'm okay with that. I was always the, I don't want to take on any debt crowd, I really hate that idea. I didn't like that idea, Mrs. Foreman, and I, Mrs. Foreman was running and I was sitting up here, and, and she was like, this is a terrible idea. And, you know, but then, you know, when we learn more about, you know, well, the cost of construction is going up and, you know, it, it made a lot more financial sense, but it took time to get us there. And I, I, you know, and you weren't even sitting up here, but, you know, we, we shared that. So, um, my point is, I think that that's a conversation I'm willing to have. I just don't think that's the conversation to have today, where Palmasola goes. But I do think we all do need to be aware that there's a lot of other big projects. So if it's something that's flexible, we up it, and it's flexible, because we do have, um, not just Palmasola, we have that K to 8, we have a, a new middle school, we have a couple new elementary schools. We have a lot of other projects that are coming on. And they aren't all going to be able to be supported by impact fees. So I know there's going to be a lot of other projects, so I'm in favor of doing that. I don't know how that would work today, since this has already been written and published the way it is. I hate for us to change a number that's been published. It says 135 million on our board work, it has been published in that manner. I have concerns about us deviating from that, because that has been what's been published to the public, and that's their understanding of what we're doing today. To change it dramatically makes me apprehensive just for that fact. I'm not necessarily against the concept of doing it. I just don't know if that's very fair to the public to do that in that manner now. Whether we can do this and then have another resolution to add on, or I, I don't know any of that, I'm not the attorney, but I have apprehension about, about changing it now, since we didn't publish it in that manner. And we've published the agenda that we're going to do this and this.
We do have to list our projects for the COPS in the rest, yeah.
Yeah, the, the resolution provides for the four projects we've talked about, there's also a catch-all.
Yeah, we could say Palmasola.
And such other facilities as maybe lease purchase from time to time in accordance with applicable law. They could put Palmasola in there, if you did want to go through and add it, I think you would have, need a formal amendment proposed, increasing the par amount from 135 million. You guys vote on that, goes approved or not, and then we continue. The other way we could do it is come back, you know, at another meeting with the increased amount and Palmasola in here, it's, it's really up to you guys.
Yeah, with spring break coming, I, I don't think we need to wait. I think we'll be able to come up with something here. Mr. Tatum had something and then that was it, and then we can come back to you.
I'm just curious, does the school system file a tax return? I keep, I heard about the IRS, I did, do we actually file a tax return? Like, are we an entity, or how does the IRS monitor us, I guess? I was just curious to, like, I don't know.
I was going to say, you're a tax exempt organization, I don't think you file a, a tax return. But for, on, on this particular financings, what you do is we file an information form with the IRS, called an AD38G form, that lets the IRS know what the bonds were issued, what they're issued for, how much is being used for projects, how much is going to pay cost of issuance, the arbitrage yield, final maturity. And then you could face a random audit down the line from the IRS on, on your debt or any one of your COPS issuances. But as far as an actual tax return, I'll defer to the sellers on that, I'm, I'm not sure you do.
Okay. Okay. Cause we have the school system, but then we also have this LLC, which is a, and maybe Mr. Dye, is that, that's a separate corporation, this LLC that we use for these type of real estate transactions?
Yeah, the, the purpose of leasing corp is strictly, its sole purpose is to act as the financing arm of the school board. So the way these deals work, these COPS deals are structured as lease purchase agreements. So you'll be the lessy, you need someone to lease the property from or the project from. That's your leasing corp, which you control as a board, as the board of directors of leasing. So all that thing, all it does is facilitate the lease purchase of these projects. And the leasing corp has no assets, no liabilities, everything is assigned over to a trustee for the benefit of, of the bondholders who purchase your debt.
And does that corporation file a tax return?
Uh, it's a 501(c)(3), since it has no assets and no liabilities, I don't think it, it does either.
Okay, just getting smarter, thanks. The, the 75, 79 million dollar amount that I heard earlier, maybe that was Mr. Rinaldi, is that this year's cap? What, what does that number represent, please?
Uh, well, for, for the K8, it's stretched over a couple of years, I, I believe. And I don't have that, but it's not a single 79 million. I think it's 34 and then 35 over the next two years. It's, yeah, it's in the.
You have it up right?
I have it up right now. It's in 22, 23, which is, I mean, this is, this is the past year's budget. It was 10 million this year, 32 the following year, and 36 the following year, to total 79.
That's the K8.
That's just the K8.
Build that K.
Okay, the K.
And so what, what that represents is the money that we're planning on spending on capital investment, whether it's buildings or new buses or something, but not from COPS, from funds that we already have or are projected to get with tax revenue from the, from the.
I believe the majority of that is, yeah, the majority of that, since it's going to be a new facility that we're generating new student stations, is impact fees.
Impact, okay, great.
Which is about 30 million a year.
30 million a year.
In revenue.
Okay. And then the last question is, if we, we start Palmasola up here right away, your office can handle the amount of workload, you're confident of that?
Absolutely, we just brought a new project director on, we're pretty excited by, came from USF, so we stole one of their good ones, so, yeah.
They won't be bored then, that's good. Okay, great, thank you.
So I guess, before we give a number of what you'd want to, because I know you want to increase, and I'm in favor of increasing as well, I don't know if 40 million is what we need. Do you, do you want to ask, I mean, do we want to bring back up Mr. Rinaldi, just?
Sure.
Just to say, what, what do you think? Just, I, I, just to say, what, what do you think? I mean, what, so if we were to add Palmasola now, obviously, we, we've seen a 500 station at 19-5. We've seen a 600 station at 22. We've seen a 750 station at 32. In that range, where would you say? I mean, I, I don't think we need 40 because it's 32, you know what I mean? So I think...
Keep in mind, when we did the Castaldi, the one building on the south side needs to remain because it's a newest building. So that already has right at 200 student stations.
That's it.
So you're building then the core and the classroom space for 300 or 400. I mean, so, you know, I, I think to say that 40 million would be reasonable. I, as of today, it probably is reasonable to, to go in that 600 to 780, 780 that we typically build an elementary school for.
Okay.
I understand.
So, so, because I, I, I don't think 750 is needed right this minute. I think we can, I, I think 500 may be a little too tight, since it's already 440. But I do think that, and we talked about this, making sure it's prepared to grow and be able to add on. So, and we have, we have money, I, I just... I don't know 40, I don't know if we have to borrow all the 40. Maybe we borrow 20 and not, and use the other for the capital, you know what I mean? If that makes sense?
Yeah.
And, yeah.
I would just add in this conversation, you want to give yourself flexibility. So you can authorize the 40, but if you guys decide you want to do just 300 student stations, that's going to cost 20. We're not going to borrow the extra 20 million dollars. We'll just execute at that level, whatever you need to, in your project fund.
We might talk about this another...
Yes, so you can, you can, you can set the bar high, knowing that there's cushion in case there's cost changes. And we can always reduce it when you actually execute the transaction.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, before there's a...
Go ahead.
I just want the district and the community to understand. If we up this COPS plan, that we don't look and say, oh, we've got all of this other money we can use now and create projects to spend it. I, I don't want the district to go down that route. We went ahead and perhaps added Palmasola because of the cost savings. And that doesn't give us the, okay, now that we borrowed it and we got it in a bank, we can now use this money because we projected that for the capital plan. I just want everyone here to understand that this is not giving you the free rein to go do another project because we borrowed money for this project. Do, and that, I will stand firm on...
But that would reiterate that they have the authority just to do whatever project they want.
Right, I understand that. But I just want, I know how, you know, oh, we got that in the bank now, we can do this project instead. So I just want everyone to understand that if we do this for Palmasola, I don't want the perception or the idea that, okay, now we can, since we have this already planned for Palmasola, we can put it somewhere else. That should be saved in our capital projects for the project that we're going to need for growth later within this. I mean, this is a 20-year COPS plan. So we don't know what out east is going to look like in 20 years. And if we have that capital money, we need to build that.
Keep in mind, we've been using the Jacobs report. And what we've spent the last four months is updating that report to identify all of the projects that we have done that are, that, the worst group there of the nine. We're going to be generating the next nine and presenting it to you when we work through our capital budget. So that's one of the key pieces, that it, it's not going to be arbitrary. It's going to be data-driven on what the, the number 10, number 11, and number 12 that we use that sales tax funding to, to use the Jacobs report as the tool to identify that.
I just don't want to have that reception, okay, now that we are possibly going to do this, yeah.
No, I mean, I think these, this is, this COPS is designated for these projects and that's, that's it. I just think allowing us, putting it higher, like Ms. Foreman is saying, it allows us to have the flexibility. If we don't want it, we don't use it to move Palmasola up, etc. So, you want to go ahead?
I move that we adopt a resolution, number 2023-02. Wait a minute, does this need superintendent recommendation?
No, I, I thought you were doing a, I thought you were doing a motion to change.
I am.
Oh.
I am. And, and the change, because we have not done a resolution yet, or a...
This is still the workshop. So I will make the recommendation in a minute. And she can make a motion to amend the dollar amount at that time if she chooses.
Right, right.
And, and in fairness, I, I do give weight to Ms. Messenger's point that we notified the public, we're going to be borrowing 135 million. And now we're, you know, going up. So I'm, I'm agreeable either way to do it, to do the, to do it now or to wait until the next meeting, so that the public has a chance to, to weigh in on it.
Well, and just so the, just so the public knows though, we're not, we have not, we could increase the potential amount...
Okay.
To one, whatever, right? Whatever you'd like in your motion. That doesn't mean we have to use it. Capital, we, we do our capital budget in a month from now or whenever it's scheduled. We can come back and maybe say we only need 142, right? So that's all we would take, that's all we would issue, is that 142. So I, I, but I do understand we, we have publicized this to the public. But it's not like we are 100% putting out whatever the new number is going to be, if that makes sense. We, because we still haven't even, I mean, the capital budget, when we go, get to that, we'll be able to really decide and hammer down numbers if we want to move Palmasola up, to then say, oh, we don't need everything we added, we only need half of what we added, or whatever. I just think it gives us flexibility to do that. Maybe we don't use any of it. Maybe we say 135, I don't know. But it gives us the flexibility. If we only vote on 135, we're stuck. And, and that, that's just what I said about a year ago or so, why not just do the 150? And so, glad you've come around. So, so are we okay? Is there any other questions? You do have a question? Absolutely, yeah.
So, two questions real quick. Number one is, what happens if in 2.9 years, we haven't used up all the money, there's still 30 million dollars sitting in the account? Can we like make a big principal payment and just, or is that, we have, you actually have to spend it within that three?
Well, the, the, the test from the IRS is the, is reasonable expectation. You have to reasonably expect on the date you issue the debt to spend it all within three years. If the three-year mark comes around and something unexpected has happened, the projects have gotten delayed, it's no harm, no foul. What will happen is you won't be able to earn more interest on the, on, on the funds that are remaining more than you're actually paying as your arbitrage yield. So you just yield or restrict the funds, the trustee on your behalf does that. So you're not earning more than you're paying on the debt. And that's really the solution.
I guess my concern is that, you know, we get, we, we borrow the extra money and then we can't spend it in the three years. And we have to go buy gold-plated toilets or something, you know?
Believe me, most of the...
I don't know, I mean, I...
Most of our school districts have, you know, while on day one, they expect to spend it all in three years, there's typically money left over at the end of that three-year period.
Okay. And then the, the last question, hopefully, maybe another one will come up, is I thought, I, I, sir, what's your name again? Mr.?
Jay Glover.
Mr. Glover. I asked him earlier, remember, I said, so do you come back to us with, with another option at some later time for us to vote on? And he said, no, once you tell us today what it is that you want, we're going to go do it based on the market. So I heard the conversation a second ago, is well, we can decide later about what amount. But my understanding from you, sir, was that once we decide today and we tell you, go, go forth and do, you will take that. There's no other opportunity for us to come back and decide on a new amount or something like that.
Generally, there would be no subsequent board action needed once you approve both of these resolutions today, if you do happen to do so. I think in this circumstance, there would be ability for you as a board via workshop or some budget process that you might go through before we actually price the bonds to decide, yes, we want to include the school that you're talking about and issue this amount of debt. I mean, as long as it's within the parameters that are approved today, you wouldn't have to officially reapprove the bond or the COPS resolution, the leasing corp resolution. But you could provide direction to your staff that as part of our budget process, now we do want to include the school at X amount and we actually execute on that. So, you know, you wouldn't reapprove the bond resolution. But I could think as a board via workshop or some other session, you could discuss this and decide, yea or nay, we do want to move forward with that additional project.
So did I hear you say earlier though, that the 9th of May is a target date for you, probably no later than?
Not necessarily no later than. I mean, we could push it back if we need it, as long as I think you had, I mean, we're not going to push it back substantially. But I think you want to have like money in hand in kind of the June, July timeframe. If you look on those projects, that's when construction's going to start, so...
But you're not going to execute before that date?
Um...
Although I heard, I thought I heard you say, well, you know, if the market looked great on the 15th of April and then you borrow 175 and we go, gee, really?
Well, we're not, we're not going to borrow the money until y'all are definitively telling us what projects we need to finance. I mean, we're not going to, you know, quite frankly, we can't do anything without the superintendent's approval when we actually price the bonds and the chair signing a bond purchase agreement that were within the parameters. So, you know, given some of the uncertainty with the project, I think over the next month, maybe plus, you all could have further discussion on that additional project. And then we're within the resolution parameters. We move forward with that additional money if you all decide to do so. And if not, you know, we issue 135 million. And then, once we've done that, that additional capacity sort of goes by the wayside and we don't issue that debt, so...
Okay, thank you.
And that, that was my, referring to the resolution, not to, the resolution right now is not to exceed 135. If we said not to exceed 150, once we narrow down what we're going to use, then we can, we don't have to use all of that, you know what I mean? Good stuff. So anything else? I don't see other, so we'll move to number 11, new business, non-cons, was there anything else? Rate, anything you guys needed to, any more presentation from y'all? You're okay? Okay. Now we're going to move to new business item, superintendent recommendation.
Yes, I recommend the approval of resolution number 2023-01, authorizing the issuance of certificates of participation, series 2023A, not to exceed 135 million dollars.
So moved.
Okay.
I'd like to make an amendment. I move to amend 11.1 to say that we will approve resolution 2023-01, authorizing issuance of certificates of participation, series 2023A, not to exceed 175 million.
I'll second the amendment.
Okay. Any discussion on that amendment? Seeing none? Are we ready to vote on that? Are you okay on the machine? You want, we'll, we'll, yep, we'll do voice. Yep, yep, we'll do voice. We'll just go around.
I'm, yes.
Yep.
Yes, I'm the amendment.
Yes, for me?
Yes.
Yeah. No.
So the amendment passes four to one. The amendment was approval of resolution number 2023-01, authorizing issuance of certificates of participation, series 2023A, not to exceed 175 million. That passes four to one.
And that language will be included to add Palmasola, correct? With that resolution?
No, not with the resolution, no. We'll do that later on.
All right, gotcha.
That was just the amendment, though.
Right.
Yeah.
So that, so you, so you voted on the amendment, now you have to vote on the resolution?
Correct. Yep, so now the new, do you want to give a new recommendation with the new, or we don't need to do that? I don't think we need to do that.
I don't think we, I don't think you need to do that.
It's amended.
Yeah, it's amended.
All right, so let's go ahead. We'll do, we'll do, Ms. Meads, we'll do voice again. We don't have to do grand cases, I know it's all, all new. So now we're voting on the new resolution, not to exceed over 175 million. So we'll start on this, this left side with Ms. Messenger.
As it's already been amended, yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Somebody make a motion on the original resolution?
I did.
Yeah, there's a motion in a second.
Yeah, then I vote.
We're all good, yeah. All right, so that passes unanimously, the approval of the resolution, number, number 2023-01, authorizing issuance of certificates of participation, series 2023A, not to exceed 175 million dollars.
Mr. Chair?
With, yep.
I believe this is a meeting of the leasing corporation.
I'm about to recess. Oh, yes, you are correct. So let me recess, let me recess the meeting. Now we're going to open up, Ms. Meads, I'm correct, right? We, we voted on that too early?
No, no.
That was correct.
Gotcha, okay. So now we're going to open up the meeting of the leasing corporation. So I call to order, meeting of Manatee County, Manatee School Board Leasing Corporation. Under the Articles of Incorporation for Manatee Board, School Board Leasing Corporation, the members of the Not-for-Profit Corporation are the members of the school board. The Articles of Incorporation provide that the Board of Directors, unless changed by the membership, are the members of the school board. The officers are the president, vice president, and secretary treasurer. The Articles also provide that the chair of the school board is the president, the vice chair is the vice president, and the secretary treasurer is the secretary of the school board, which is a superintendent. So now we have new business of the Manatee County, number 14, superintendent?
Yes, I recommend the approval of resolution number 23, 2023-02, authorizing the issuance of certificates of participation, series 2023A, not to exceed 175 million dollars.
So moved. Second.
Second.
I did a second.
Do we have that one up and ready in a grand case?
It, it shows the old, but I changed it because the board had changed the number.
Yep. At the same...
So I should say 135 and then have them change it? I apologize.
Okay, no, you're fine. Who knew?
Are you going to restate it?
You want me to redo it?
Yeah, can you give us another recommendation?
I recommend the approval of resolution number 2023-02, authorizing the issuance of certificates of participation, series 2023A, not to exceed 135 million dollars.
So moved. Second.
We got a second from Ms. Bray?
I'd like to, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to amend 14.1 to read approval of resolution 2023-02, authorizing issuance of certificates of participation, series 2023A, not to exceed 175 million dollars.
I will second.
Any discussion?
Any discussion?
Yes. Yes. That, that resolution will include, because I've read the resolution and it has the names of the schools. That would be modified with this motion, correct?
Okay, will you entertain a correction to the motion?
That's, I guess I'm asking...
Yeah, there's, there's language in the resolution that says it banks to four other schools. And it says, and such other facilities as may be leased on the current discussion.
We could add the name in that resolution.
We, we can, certainly.
I would like to see that in there.
If you want that as part of the amendment, we can do that.
Please, that would be the...
I would like to restate my amendment to say that I move that we amend 14.1 to approve resolution 2023-02, authorizing the issuance of certificates of participation, 2023A, not to exceed 175 million dollars. And that the resolutions state, um, uh, the additional 40 million dollars for Palmasola Elementary School.
Does a second agree to that?
Are we, are, is the 40 million dollars for Palmasola? Or are we just adding Palmasola as a project? But I don't know that we meant to say that the whole 40 million was...
No, just adding.
Yeah, we're just...
We're just adding the name.
We're just adding the name of Palmasola as a designated project.
Okay.
Yes.
Take away my forty million dollars, okay?
Okay.
Okay.
So we're, we're, basically we are changing it to read one hundred and seventy-five million and adding Palmasola as a designated project.
Right.
Okay, then I will second that, yes, yes.
Now is your discussion on that?
Good.
All right, so let's go ahead and vote on that. Oh, I'm sorry.
My button.
Um, I don't have it up.
I just want to be clear that my no is not, not in support of Palmasola, but in the way that this is happening in this manner, and how it's not been publicized to the public. I just want to be clear, that's why I'm voting no.
Gotcha.
Mr. Chair, um, I'd like to point out that I recently learned that while we have a screen here that has the votes, and who voted, and who objected, uh, or voted no, they don't get that on the TV.
The public.
So if you wouldn't mind, after the vote, indicate.
Sure.
Who voted no?
Didn't know, didn't know that.
I didn't know that either, so.
That had been brought to my attention, too. During the meeting, we never show the screen of the votes. Maybe that's something we can pop in.
You could, yeah.
Yeah.
IT looks.
Robert's rules, I think, say that, that the chair should actually call it.
Right.
Like they should say, with two dissenting so-and-so and so-and-so.
Right, I, I get that.
But, yeah, so we've got it, we've got.
Uh, clerk is asked that the motion get restated for the record. Clarify.
I move that we amend fourteen point one, authorizing issuance of certificates of participation, series twenty-two-three A, not to exceed one hundred and seventy-five million dollars. And that the resolution add, um, Palmasola Elementary as a project.
A second, a second.
Okay, so let's go ahead and vote, yes?
Yes.
We have firsts and seconds?
Oh, yes.
Yes.
No, for the reasons I stated.
So.
Yes.
Yeah, we use, yeah, a second. So the resolution, uh, the approval of resolution number twenty-two-three, uh, dash zero-two, authorizing issuance of certificates of participation, series twenty-two-three A, amended to not to exceed one hundred and seventy-five million, passes four to one, with Ms. Messenger dissenting for the reason she stated. And, so we're good for the leasing corporation, correct?
That was the amendment.
Yep.
Now it's the resolution as amended.
Yep, do you want to reread that, or no? As amended, or do you want to just, us first, go ahead and do it?
Just go forward.
Okay. Okay, so now we'll vote on the new, on the new amended resolution of the issuance of the, of the certificates of participation, series twenty-three-three A, not to exceed one hundred and seventy-five million, and that Palmasola Elementary is in the projects listed. So I, I have a motion and a second.
I already.
Oh, you did it, all right.
I moved when we first, when she first read it, and you seconded it. Then she had the amendment, then he seconded the amendment.
Perfect.
We voted on the amendment, we're going back to the original motion, now that it has been amended, so I was the mover.
Gotcha.
She was the seconder.
Gotcha. So now we just vote?
Right.
Okay?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
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 So, so the two, the amendment passes unanimously, uh, the approval of the resolution to authorize the issuance of certificates of participation not to exceed one hundred and seventy-five million. Now we are adjourned the Manatee School Board Leasing Corporation. We are reconvening the regular meeting of the school board, uh, for this morning, and I'm also going to put us on a recess.
Thank you.
To go to the, use what we do and sign.
All right. Call the meeting back to order. We will move on to number 16, the consent items and our sitting as a superintendent recommendations, Mr. Wagner.
I recommend the approval of the consent agenda items.
So moved. I'll second.
We got a motion, we got a second and discussion.
There will be, at the end, I do have a discussion, but I don't want to pull anything, but I do have some discussion on one or two of them, if I may.
Okay.
Is it okay to have that discussion now?
Sure. Well.
I don't want to pull it, but I do have a question on a couple of the items.
A question of the projects, like to someone specifically?
Two other items that are on the consent, I just have a question. I don't want to pull, I just have.
Yeah.
You're saying discussion, so this is discussion.
There's not supposed to be discussion.
There's not supposed to be discussion, it's either a poll or not poll, or we vote on it. So you can certainly ask those questions at the end, like during your comment, your remarks, you could definitely ask those questions.
All right, then I'll make a motion to pull items 11 and 13, only because I have questions.
I'll second.
Okay, so we're moving 11 and, we're removing 11 and 13 from the consent item. So we need another recommendation, or no, we're good?
No, those are.
Okay, so we're pulling 11 and 13, we've got our, our motion in our second, we've already approved the pulling, so do we have? Well, we're gonna have to amend the consent, so.
So can I ask a question real quick, the policy to, to pull at this point, is, did we decide earlier, previous meetings that? Because I didn't, I thought I was making a motion to amend the motion for consent, but if it just, if just one person can, and I think that's what we decided, one person can pull something from the consent, then there's, there was no need for me to second anything, right? Ms. Bray just decided she wanted to pull.
Yeah, you are correct.
Okay, so.
And I think that's what Mr. Die is about to.
Yes, it didn't require a second.
Didn't require a second, okay, great.
So we pulled
11 and 13. And they're just generic questions, so.
I have a question, it's a procedural one. We've already approved the agenda, the time that we've said you can pull it without a motion is at the approval of the agenda. That did not happen when we approved the, we have set our agenda for the day. We've already approved our agenda, so if you're looking to change the actual agenda, which is what this is, that's not the same thing as pulling it at the approval of the agenda, which is a different procedure
Correct.
than what we're doing right now, because right now, we are now on to the approval of the consent agenda. No, we've already set our agenda, we've already agreed to our agenda, and we're taking things off of the agenda and moving them. That's a different procedure, I don't, I don't, I mean, whatever our attorney says, but to me, like, that's a different.
I agree with you.
That's different.
Now that you brought that up, I agree with you, so Mr. Die, would you say we're not pulling, we should not be pulling any consent items right now?
Well, technically, I believe Ms. Messenger is correct. The I, I think, just this one time, because of that, it's an informational point with a new board member. I would recommend going ahead and pulling the two items.
Okay.
With the understanding that it should be done at the beginning.
It should be done at the beginning with the agenda items, okay. And in, my other question, I guess, would be, you're gonna refer, are you, you know someone's here to answer those questions?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so let's vote on the consent items minus number 11 and number 13.
Mr. Chair, if I could. My intent is just to ask a couple of questions, when we do a motion and a second, and then the chair says discussion, I raise my hand for discussion, just on those two items, I don't.
And I shouldn't have said discussion, because in consent items, there shouldn't be a discussion.
Oh, okay.
That was my error.
Okay, so in the future, I want to understand the process, because we've been through this too many times. If I wanted to pull something from consent, I should do that at item number six, approval of the agenda.
Correct.
Is that what you're?
Correct.
Okay, all right, I just have a couple of simple questions, that's all it is on this.
But even going back further, I think some of these questions can be answered, not in the consent, just not at this meeting in general. If you have other, if you have questions when you're doing the board briefing.
I'll withdraw my, I'll withdraw pulling the consent items with the understanding that I have a conversation with Mr. Rinaldi on these two things, is that all right? Would that fit everybody?
Perfect.
Better, because, yeah, I, I just wanted to, I wanted to do it open, but it's causing such a problem. I'll have a private conversation with him about it.
So, we've got up on your screen, the approval of the consent items, we've got our mover, Ms. Foreman, seconder, Ms. Messenger. I'll go ahead and plug in your votes there, and it.
I'm not gonna approve them.
Consent item, four approvals, one no for Ms. Spray. Number 17, item number 17, oh, excuse me, we don't have any more public comment, so we're good there. Number 19, unless I missed something from the beginning of the meeting, 18, there is nothing there.
So see there?
So, so 19, new business, non-consent items. Mr. Wagner, number one.
Absolutely, the superintendent recommends the approval of the Walter E. Miller School Support Center renovation, the agreement between the owner and Wharton Smith Precussions, pre-construction services, and the amount of $84,001.68.
So moved. I'll second.
We got a motion and a second discussion on this first item, a new business.
Myself again, I'm guessing I'm the only one who's got my hand up.
I was about to click on the speaker, but the voting came up, so were, did you, you have your?
Yeah, I have my hand up, I just wanted.
I'm sorry, I couldn't click on it.
Okay, it's all right, I got you. Again, you know, we just approved a COPS plan for $175 million, and now we're going to, we did talk about this during a workshop, about how much the building's worth, I think, didn't we talk about that at the workshop, that its building's worth about 11 million? And now we're gonna proceed with the project, am I correct that this is a beginning process to renovate this building? Okay. All right, I just want to make sure I understand the process, that this is what we're about to do, so that was the only question I had.
Anything else?
I just want to thank Mrs. Bray for bringing up the fact that, yes, we did have a thorough conversation about this at the workshop, where we really did consider different options and.
Yeah. And this was the time from our last meeting, we pushed back saying, we'll vote on it on the 28th, so. All right, so if anybody would plug, put in their votes for this particular item. And the approval of the Walter E. Miller SS Center renovation passes unanimously. Number two, Mr. Wagner.
Very good, number two is the approval of the Walter E. Miller School Support Center renovation agreement between the owner and OCI associates, and the amount of $75,000. Superintendent recommends this approval.
I moved. I'll second.
We got a motion, we got a second, any discussion? No discussion, so go ahead and vote on the second part of this renovation for this building. And item number two passes unanimously, thank you all very much, number three, appro, oh, excuse me, Mr. Wagner.
Very good, number three is approval to notify Visible Men's Academy of the intent to enter into a contract renewal discussions for the 23-24 school year, superintendent recommends this notification.
So moved.
We have a motion?
I'll second.
We have a second, any discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, so I see, I see Ms. Messenger first.
I just want to maybe ask Mr. Wagner to clarify what this item is and the following items. That it's not, it's not approval of, of anything other than we're going to notify these charter schools that we intent, intend to work out a contract with them.
You may want to.
Is that, am I understanding that correctly?
Right, Dr. Breslin, Dr. Breslin will come to the podium to answer that.
Yes, so we're simply notifying them that we're gonna enter negotiations, and the intent to renew is for the dates listed for each item.
And this is something that I don't believe I've ever seen come before me before, it's based on new statutes?
Yes, ma'am, so we have a duty to notify them of our intent at 90 days before the end of the school year.
Okay, so, so this is not anything other than, hey, we intend to negotiate with you about a contract?
For your renewal, yes.
Okay, thank you so much.
Can I give a point of clarification on this?
Yeah, oh, yes, go ahead.
Okay, during the last legislative session, there was a change in law, Ms. Messenger, Dr. Breslin stated it absolutely correct, that because of this change, there was a 90-day notice in advance, based upon something that took place in Hillsborough, the legislature acted upon it. So in the past, what we would do is we'd bring the recommendation for renewals contemporaneously with an executed contract for the board to vote on one item, but because of the 90-day rule, that it now got separated. So if the board does make an approval today of these items, we would go into contract for the renewal period, which is now a revised form from the, from the Florida Department of Education, and it would be brought back on a date certain to be effective the following school year.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Mr. Tatum, you were next.
Yes. So my main concern with this application, as I'm looking at it here, and I understand it's not the final, it, we're going in negotiations, is, you know, we have a policy, and we talked about this last time, about not discriminating based on race and gender, and and I'm just reading this to you, I'm not directing it at you, I'm just reading, there's a, in the application, it talks about on page 34 of the application, which is actually 42 of the PDF document, it says, VMA believes this is among the most important principles underlying the success of students with disabilities and struggling students, and places a very high premium on the principle of diversity and inclusion. And unfortunately, those words are associated with things like, that are prohibited by law to not be taught, which is white privilege, systemic racism, all those types of things, so I would encourage the people who are working on this application to relook at this aspect of it. Also, we recently received a word from the Mr. Diaz, who is the Director of Education here in the state of Florida, and he says in this letter dated yesterday, actually, it says, "To be clear, we are communicating to all public school districts and individual public charter schools," which this is one of them, "that it is incumbent upon you to make certain that all materials are consistent with State Board of Education rule and Florida statutes. Schools should immediately cease using any materials that conflict with Florida law." And in the paragraph above it, it says, "I implore you to conduct a thorough review to ensure all content is compliant with Florida law." And it specifically cites edgenuity imagines learning divisive and discriminatory content branded as social emotional learning has no place in Florida's classroom." So one was a statement about, I'm concerned about that language, and then how do we assure that if districts or charter schools are using the curriculum in any way, I implore you to conduct a thorough review to ensure all content is compliant with Florida law? How do, how do, how does that, how does that review of their curriculum, does, does that happen in this negotiation process? I guess that's what I'm asking you, to make sure that it's compliant with Florida law.
So I'll certainly let legal weigh in on, on that.
The answer is, all, all, all public schools must teach to the Florida standards, charters are a public school. In addition to that, if there's any additional concerns that you may have, when we go to contract, I'll gladly, now, we'll gladly ensure that those concerns are addressed, they must be mutually agreed upon by the school, but again, it could be, it could be addressed during the contractual, during the contractual phase. The Florida Department of Education gives us a standard contract. We use it as a template, but we are allowed to add additional language, as long as it's consented to, and if it's not consented to, then we have the chance to address this with the DOE itself, through a mediation process.
So I would just like to make sure that the application and the curriculum, that we do a review of it, and that it's compliant with HB7, is that a possibility, or, or not?
I will, I will, during the contract phase itself, whether it's this school or any other school, we will ensure that they will comply with all Florida statutes, it's actually stated within the contract itself, that would be all curriculum as well, that is compliant.
But will we actually do a review of the curriculum, as, or, or not?
Okay, during the, during the renewal phase, Dr. Breslin's team did go out to the school, did have an opportunity to review budget, curriculum, so it's part, it's part and parcel. I understand that there's certain buzzwords that were there within the application itself, however, I'm gonna repeat this one thing. All public schools must teach to the Florida standards. And that's, that's required by Florida statute 1,002.33, they must follow the proper academic program.
And the applicable law, such as HB7 from 2022.
That would be correct.
Okay, so what is the opportunity for us, I don't know who can answer this, if I wanted to look at this curriculum of this charter school, that is an, I have an opportunity to do that, or not?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna say this in conjunction with Dr. Breslin, curriculum is not a single object itself, curriculum is throughout math, English, language arts. Dr. Breslin, take it from there, as to the scope of curriculum at any school.
Right, so when we look at the review, we look at the core curriculum and the core instructional materials, and so that would center around social studies, science, math, ELA, if you're looking at elementary, reading as well. And outside of, of that scope, we, we don't examine, but that is the scope we work under.
Okay, so you're just examining a slice of their curriculum, but.
The core area, because that is what statute defines, as the, as the core curriculum and core instructional standards, that's within the scope of, of our, our work.
Okay, so what mechanism do we have, then, to review the whole curriculum to assure that it, because it is using public money, that it is in compliance with, with the law?
And so I think if you're, if you're leading towards, you know, DEI or SDL, I think it would go back to that contract, to make sure our contract notes that they have to follow all statutory requirements, and if they have not, then, you know, we are able to, to take steps. But that's my understanding of our, of our reach.
Okay.
Right.
I, I concur.
I do concur.
So.
Okay.
I think what he's looking for is, maybe not, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but we, do we have the authority to go into a charter school and just like, we're about to do our adoption for our social studies, make it visible for people to see what they're teaching, can we go in there and say, hey, you can't, that, we don't, do we have that authority? Or is it the board of that charter school that has that, that it relies on them? And we're just saying, hey, follow this, we're expected to follow it, but we really can't do anything about it?
I'm gonna tell you yes and no to what you said. The groundwork is the Florida's, Florida Department of Education approved curriculum, that is the best standards. Now, the best standards have not been enacted in all subject matter, so we, so the default is the Florida standards. Now, any variation from the Florida standards would be a technical breach. So do we have to, can we parcel out each and every subject matter, based on upon the autonomy of a charter school, the answer is no. I don't think that we can go line by line, I don't think we have the capacity to go line by line in everything, however, let's put it this way, as a sponsor, to approve a charter, there was a charter application, and within that charter application, you got a chance to, to analyze curriculum, budget, and I think 15 other areas. So we had the chance to do the overview at all times, and if we need a deeper dive, any, any potential brief would, would, would result, and I think would give good faith basis for a deeper dive into any school's curriculum, if they're not teaching what they're supposed to teach. If they're not teaching to the Florida standards, then, yeah, my, my short answer is, I believe we'd be able to look at it further, but at the same time, respect the autonomy of a particular school.
Well, that's kind of what I'm looking for, is I would like to look into it further, because when I see those words, that makes me concerned, because I know what academic subjects are, go along with those words, and so as part of this review, in the next 90 days, as part of the contract, I would like the opportunity to review some of their curriculum as it opposed, maybe their social studies curriculum, or and I'm, I'm, I'm learning about the process, but I'd like to, I'd like the ability to, like you said, do a deeper dive into their curriculum, and then maybe Dr. Breslin and I could have a conversation offline about what that exactly would look like, the deep dive, does that seem like a, a plan, if I wanted to look at their curriculum a little deeper, or?
And so our team, our, our specialists for social studies did review their curriculum, and offered a rating, and, and certainly, we could provide those documents, and I would have to go back, because I'm not familiar with the statute as much as Mr. Tittlebaum here, on whether or not we can go back and ask for a further dive into their curriculum, social studies, so to speak.
I could say this to you, as part of the legal process, I can, I would tell you on behalf of our school district, the contract is my purview. So I can control language within the contract to ensure compliance. In regard to a deeper dive, with the cooperation of the school, I'm sure we have that, if there's a concern that a potential non-compliance issue, I would believe that, and the school is here actually right now, in this audience, they would be cooperative for us, and I don't think, I think we'd have a good faith basis based upon any type of language contained in the renewal application that may suggest something to the contrary.
Well, that's what, that's what I'm looking for, because I, I would not be able to support the renewal of this school with that kind of verbiage in there, and I want, and because it's there now, that makes me concerned, so I'd like to do a deeper dive, and hopefully, the school, in a good faith effort, will allow us, and even me personally, myself, who was an educator and a former assistant professor at a university, to take a look at the curriculum, to make sure that it is in compliance with Florida law, so I'd appreciate that opportunity. Thanks.
Thank you.
Ms. Bray, you were next on the board.
Hi, how are you?
Well, how are you?
Good. This says it, it's a review of their charter. So I looked online at their minutes. I couldn't find any financial information on there, but they had, where they met, who was there, they meet via Zoom, from what I could tell. And I don't know if all charters do that or not, but they had a meeting in December 7th, but I couldn't find any minutes from that, the current, and I saw some language in, in there as well, of this, of this huge document, that would, took out some words, and then added in a little more gentle words. I'm like, you know, the demographics of what students go there, I don't necessarily think they need to be defined by their, by their race or anything like that, I think it's more about the, the need of the student. So my, I'm worried about this school, the grade currently now is an F student, according to their documents that I saw online. They chose not to do a grade for 2021, opted out due to COVID. So I just want this school to understand that people are looking, and, and, you know, there's 61, 65 students currently enrolled at this school, and I would think that the 65 students, that's a pretty small school base that, you know, we should be doing better than an F, in my opinion, so that would be my just comments, I'm not directing anything, I'm just, I'm looking at it, and I, I'm, from what I see, there's gonna have to be a lot of change for me to vote to renew that school.
Thank you, thank you, and I think that, you know, your comments are heard, that's the reason for the, the one-year agreement, as opposed to the longer, to look for that turnaround based on what we see as the data coming in.
Ms. Foreman?
I, I, I did locate the audited financial statement from last year, it's, actually, I'm pretty sure it was sent to all of the board members.
Okay, I probably didn't catch it.
But it's definitely part of the, part of the audit committee. And I have concerns, not only from the standpoint of the academics, but also the finance, and that is because the in the prior fiscal year, their revenues, okay, were 2.1 million. Of that, 1.3 million were contributions, more than 50%. If you don't have the contributions, and they have the expenditures of 2,66,000, they don't have enough to sustain the school. For this current year, through December 31, the information that we've been given, you know, each month, they have lost $331,000 for this year, now, granted, timing-wise on, on taxes may be an issue, but. Now, granted, timing-wise on, uh, on taxes may be an issue, but, um, I'm very concerned about their finances. The, uh, the review made a statement under financing operations that the approved budget has no reserve. From a cash standpoint, we have a month and a half remaining. Survey number two numbers compared to enrollment estimates, the student count dropped from one hundred to sixty-three, decreasing the number of students with ESE services, therefore decreasing their funding from eighty-two thousand to twenty-four thousand. There are no capital projects funds, cautions are needed due to the school rating and decrease in funding as a result. The lack of academic performance, okay, um, is my beef on the family empowerment scholarships. You know, a private school can, they can generate these kinds of, um, uh, performances without the public knowing. I appreciate the fact that they are a charter school and this information is available. For example, English, Language Arts, eighteen percent were proficient. And mathematics, twenty-seven percent were proficient. For us, at this point, to say, yes, we're gonna go into negotiation on a contract, it's basically saying, okay, let's, let's go to work. I don't, I am not comfortable without having, I'm not comfortable based on their finances and their academic performance for any period of time. That's my position on it.
We don't have anybody else raised, but I have a question on what we're voting on. We're not voting, are we, we're voting on to notify them that the, the contract renewal discussions for twenty-three, twenty-four school year, not that we're approving them to have the contract for twenty-three, twenty-four. Is that correct?
Well, we're voting for the intent, that we would go forth with the intent to, to enter negotiations, to have a contract for the following school year. So, so it, it would be, yes, that we would say on our behalf, we're going to work with you on a contract.
When, when we bring up like the academic concern from last year's numbers, we haven't finished it, so, so we haven't finished this year, so there could be gains that we, we don't know. And we're sitting in February saying, you know, obviously there, there was the concern of the F grade is why it's a one-year issue. Uh, and, and why in the statute we can't eliminate a, someone just off a one-year F, right? So if they've, will, that, will, so my question is, if we approve, if you were to approve this, are you, can we come, is there ever gonna be a chance for us to come back and say, hey, they never approved for their last grade from the course of this year, but we're still gonna give them that year? Does that make sense, what I'm asking?
Yes, um, and so when we bring the contract forward, I think there's always room for the board to, to do as, as they wish. You know, I do see their, their data for the, because they do take, uh, the state assessments, PM one to PM two.
Okay.
And we've seen student growth in ELA and math. I cannot, being that they're new assessments, I cannot tell you what their students are gonna test in May, uh, but the curriculum review showed very favorable results as to what was happening in the classroom. Uh, so I would say changes have been made. Uh, I, we see the changes in academics, and that's the year for the, that's the reason for the recommendation of the one year. Uh, if they're double F, they close automatically per statute.
They were already in, I don't, I don't know if you'd call intervention, but they were already in a process of review because of the F.
Correct.
And so that's been happening, and so I just, I don't want to punish a school because of last year's grade. We don't have this year's grade yet to say, hey, did you make changes? And if you feel as a review of, they did take the PM one and two, there are, there has been gains during that review process. You know, and I know the counsel in, Ms. Tittlebaum can answer this, they have to submit things and go through that process. So what does that look like?
Well, um, let me say this to you. When we got their grade with the superintendent, um, her over, with her oversight, we entered to a school improvement plan, which the board actually approved.
Right.
So what you're hearing from Dr. Breslin is the results of what she's seeing from the school improvement plan, which they must adhere to. The board itself, for why we're here today, I'm gonna reiterate and restate you, uh, to the board, any action against a school requires ninety days' notice. And that's, so for, for us at this point in time, is that we're seeing the school improvement plan being followed. They're statutorily, they have one F at this point in time. And at this juncture, the recommendation has been to enter into a limited contract for one-year time period.
Good.
Sure.
Um, oh, we got lit up again. Okay, Ms. Foreman, did you lit, light it, or did you not?
Oh, uh, I didn't.
Okay, so Mr. Tatum, uh, did you have another question?
I do, so as this was, as it's been explained to me, and I'm, I'm a little bit confused before the meeting, as it was explained to me, is this was an approval to enter into contract negotiations, but that there would be another vote later to either give a thumbs up or a thumbs down on the actual renewal of the charter school itself. But it seems like that's a little nuanced that we, what, because what I thought I kind of heard you say was, well, we are kind of actually saying that we want a contract, this is, and we can't really, once we've said we want a contract, we can't really go back and, well, never mind. That, I'm, I'm still confused on, is, is today approval to proceed with a contract renewal and we get another chance? Or if we approve today, that's it, we, we don't have much?
So it's the intent to go into the contract, that we would negotiate a contract for one-year renewal? And so for the, the, and again, I'm gonna turn to, to legal to explain.
Because of the change in statute, um, that we have ninety days of official notice, there was a charter review process for that particular school, which enabled the, um, administration to make a recommendation for a one-year contract. Bear in mind, you, um, and things may change, but notwithstanding, the intention of today's vote is, and it's not just this school, there's other schools as well for the renewal process, is to go to contract, to bring a contract before the board thereafter for the approval of the contract by their certain terms and lengths. But it's not, I, this wasn't done in a vacuum where the administration said, based on time constraints only, they're coming before you. To the contrary, there was a charter renewal process, followed by Dr. Breslin's team, for a deep, for a deep dive to look into the school itself and to bring it forward to you today. And, um, for the recommendation for Visible Men's Academy for a one-year contract.
Still, I must have, I'm sorry, I still don't feel like I've got an answer to my question. Is there a second opportunity, when this comes back before us as an official contract, to say approve or not approve? Or is it, if we do it today, it's a done deal and we're just?
Okay, it goes a little bit into the board, the board attorney's function. Things can be amended, decisions such as this. But bear in mind, your, your clock itself is ninety days. So should there be something, so should you say yes today, and again, I'm gonna have Mr. Dye correct me, should there be different factors that come, that come down that require you to, to want to modify your vote or change the vote itself? You may do so, provided that any notice to the school must be done within a ninety-day time period as per, um, Florida statute. Mr. Dye?
Yes, so this is not your final action of, uh, entering into a contract. Um, it's, the action is to go into negotiations with a recommendation from your staff of a one-year renewal. But, but you're only voting to go into negotiations. What Mr. Tittlebaum was saying is that if, if the board wanted to start the process of termination or possibly terminating this charter school, that also requires a ninety-day notice.
Okay.
But that's not what's here before you today.
So let's say that I have, I, I look at the curriculum and I do have some concerns and we can't figure, we can't work it out with the school. And I say, I, I don't believe this complies with the law, or maybe we find some finance issues that don't believe that it's gonna be, the school's gonna be financially solvent. We could say, okay, now we're gonna start a ninety-day clock because two months from now, we've done the curriculum review, we've done the financial review, we don't believe it's a viable school. There's a new action that the board could take at, at that time, is that?
But yes, and during this ninety-day period, those, those, uh, concerns could get addressed.
Okay, so if I had concerns like with the curriculum, I could make them, I could put it back on the agenda as an item and say, I'd like, I'd like us all to talk about these curriculum issues I found, or someone could find financial issues and say, I'd like to talk about the financial issues we found.
That could be woven into the actual contract.
Okay.
By, by the contract itself, I can, I could easily address the academic concerns. That's not to be an issue for you. If house, for compliance with House Bill seven and for all Florida sta- Florida standards, I, that would be something, again, we cover it, but we can cover it on a deeper level, specifically referencing statute, that all curriculum must comply with Florida statute, including but not limited to House Bill seven. That's, that's a no-brainer for a lawyer. As for the financials, presently, the, the, um, I, again, for, by statute, the, um, are, at this, at this point in time, not in a deteriorating financial condition. So they would have to be two months with the inability to meet their current obligations. That triggers a process to the state for a, for an improvement plan approved by the, um, by the commissioner himself for, for that. And so at this juncture, I'm going back to the administration. And the recommendation from the administration for this, as we will see for four other contracts, to, for, to recommend a renewal and for to enter into negotiations.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I just wanted to read one thing, but he kind of reiterated it, that, that none of the grounds for non-renewal have been documented. And that's in writing in front of us for every single one of these. So that is what I believe this board has to pay attention to. Like, we can't, they have their own governing board to make their own decisions for their school. We can't micromanage that school. The whole point of the charter school system is so that they can do what works for them, of course, following the law. I, I have no desire to, to manipulate that in any way. We have to follow the law. And it says in writing to us for every single one of these today that none of the grounds for non-renewal have been documented. I've been here before when we had those grounds that had been renewed, that had been documented. It was an awful experience. I've also been here before where we, as a board, you denied a charter with grounds that were documented, and then it still went on appeal. So unless there's documented grounds, there's, unless there's documented grounds, what recourse does this board truly have on anything that's been talked about? The finances, the academics, the curriculum, what recourse does this board have unless there's documented grounds?
Okay, Ms. Messenger, based upon a review of the school, their present finances, I would agree with you. The document itself does not state there is any legal basis at this point in time.
Right.
However, it's not to say a snapshot will not change.
Agreed.
And it's not to say that within the time period, you have ninety days prior to the close of a school year to actually take action. But at this point in time, the administration has made the, has made the recommendation for the renewal, having done the deep dive through Dr. Breslin's department, looking at the curriculum, looking at the finances. May not be what we love, I'm gonna put my hand up, up here, but if the, if it meets the standard, it might be across the plate, the lowest possible strike, but you still got to cross the plate. However, I agree with Ms. Foreman as well, that we have to look at all things, look at all finances. I've not known this lady to be wrong with numbers ever. So I'm gonna say to you, from the board right now, from the standpoint, there was no legal basis for the denial presently as it exists today. They're on a school improvement plan, which they are following. So for the academics, I would like to follow Dr. Breslin's lead. And as for the finances, um, what I've been advised is that they have been doing fundraising. So I'd like to closely monitor their, their statements, um, their financial statements, statements there are. But at the same time, remember that our action, if anything, is ninety days prior to the, to the end of the school year.
Right, and I was gonna say, I know what happened in Hillsborough County. I understand why this came to fruition. And I'm not looking to be unfair in any way, but you're right, we have a, we have that timeframe, no matter when it is, as long as we notify. And so to me, the most important part for this one, and for all of them, is that it says there are no documented causes for non-renewal right now. Doesn't mean that won't change, but all of these discussions, to me, are fruitless because there are no documented reasons for a non-renewal at this point.
And Ms. Messenger, you also raised a good point because I was with you during the time where there was a financial issue with one of the charter schools. And that doesn't result in a non-renew, ninety-day notice, that results in, in an immediate termination. And by statute, causes for non-renewal or termination, which will include the failure to meet generally accepted standards of fiscal management due to deteriorating financial conditions or financial emergencies determined by Florida statute one thousand two point three four five. So your, your hands are not tied. If the school fails financially, this board may take action at any time.
At any time?
At any time.
When that were to happen.
Correct.
It's not at this moment, which is what was before us today.
That is correct. And at the same time, there is more, more leaps and jumps for school districts than there are before. For, for us taking immediate action, now we must go to court as well for, um, they have just made the, the game more procedurally late and for us attorneys.
Probably was written by attorneys.
I suppose so.
Was that it, Ms. Messenger?
Yes.
Ms. Bray?
Okay. I don't want to be the big bad wolf of this school, okay, but I want every student to succeed. And to succeed, you have to have good leadership, good direction. And I looked online for their financials on there. I, I do know, thank you, Ms. Foreman, for bringing up the financials from the audit committee. Like you said, she's never wrong on numbers, and she's not. But when I read, uh, a minutes from this school from October fifth charter renewal, it says, uh, bullet point number two, assembling data and records and creating those documents which do not exist. That raises my eyes a little bit. Okay, we gotta create a document that doesn't exist for a charter renewal. And then I go through all of this, but I just want this school to understand, we want you to succeed, but you can't keep this path. And if you're looking at it, I trust you, I trust that you're gonna bring forth data, whether it's good or bad, on this school. But I do want this school to understand that we're looking at it. And I'm not happy with looking at what I've read about them, and with, we're talking about sixty-five students. And I looked in the document too, that they was gonna add another fifth grade class. Well, if we're doing a, they've already had a F, why would we be adding more classes to the school if we are not getting the ones that we already have to the level that, that they need to be at? So that would be my big concern, you know, if we're at a F, but their vision is to add another fifth grade class? You know, sixty-five students, how many, you know? And I know that they had had up to eighth grade, now they're going down to just fifth grade, from what I read, I believe. But yeah, finance is, uh, is a big concern to me as well. Thank you, Ms. Foreman, for bringing that up. I do see that here now. But yeah, it's, uh, and I've drove by that school as well, and yeah, there's a lot there to unpack, so I'll just leave it at that.
Ms. Foreman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Um, Dr. Breslin?
Yes, ma'am.
PM one to PM two, what are the, uh, uh, performance?
So we're looking at a, a projected, now this is your, the projection that Evan McCarthy works with. Uh, the PM two projection for VMA was sitting at, um, thirty-seven percent, um, for ELA and forty-seven percent math. Now, I, I, I will tell you that those numbers, uh, we're, we're still learning about these assessments. Now, I, I, I will tell you that those numbers, we're, we're still learning about these assessments. Uh, but what I did see, and I think I have some notes of mine, is, is growth specifically in ELA, whereas PM one, um, through PM two, we saw twenty-eight percent of the level ones move to level two, which is, which is a very strong indication that they're closing those gaps. It, it really depends now on the work that was done between December and May to see the growth towards proficiency. Right? Because level two, positive growth, we like seeing that, but we still want them to hit that proficiency.
Well, we would insist on positive growth from PM one to PM two because that's the begin, PM one is the beginning of the tack, of, of the school year. So there's, you know, you've got to,
You have to.
If, if you don't improve significantly
Right.
From PM one to PM two.
Right. Um, but again, if they don't, then the state would, you know, make the moves if there wasn't a grade of an F.
Okay, so that, that is documentation, okay, Ms. Messenger, but also their financials are documentation. And the review set, you know, from a cash standpoint, we have a month and a half remaining. If that's not a deteriorating condition, I don't know what is. You're giving me the bug eyes there, what, what?
I can only tell you what statute says.
Okay.
The statute doesn't require fund balance, so we can't impose a fund balance upon them. However, we may project out, as you read the financials, you're, you're an accountant. You know where numbers lead. However, for us to take action, they must not be able to meet their, their, their debts. It has to be more than two months. And then we, what we do is we follow the statute and the statute would say we'd come together with their CFO, look at their numbers, see what they're doing right, see what expenses they've taken, and thereafter could go to a corrective action plan. Financially with the, with approved again by the commissioner himself to say how will we become a solvent school?
Well, you said two months. This is one and a half months.
Right.
No, they, no, but the point is, it has to be triggered.
Oh, you gotta be bad for two.
You gotta be triggered, exactly right, Mr. Cho. It'd be triggered by that. Then you, then again, you, we, we work with the school together and we come to, and we'd come together. We've done that with not, we do that with any school that is in that situation to see, did you take an expense too, too prematurely? Can you defer an expense? It's all a balance sheet. It depends on when you wanna take expenses, depending on what your real income versus your expenses are. So some things may have been taken prematurely, some things may not. I can't speak over their financials, only you can as an accountant.
Thank you.
Mr. Tatum?
I, I just wanted to make the point that I, I hope we have the opportunity to review these applications. This is a new board member, it's my first time coming forward. I, I understand the language that's in there that says, well, there's nothing right now that would warrant denial of this application, but, I mean, we're the ones making the decisions. So the idea that, well, and you, you guys did your work and, and, but it can't be a fait accompli, you know, a done deal, that's what those words mean in French. So I understand that right now there's no denial, but to me, that's the point of doing this, like, okay, board members, here are the applications. Do you have concerns about curriculum? Do you have concerns about finances? And I, I hope that we, that we do have that opportunity. It's not just a done deal when it gets to us, right? That we have the opportunity to review these applications and bring up concerns. Is that what we're doing right now, I hope? It's not just a done deal.
So you are doing that right now, Mr. Tatum?
Great.
And again, this is a new business, a matter for discussion. There is documentation for the review process that was taken by Dr. Breslin's team. That will should be able to show what was the basis for the recommendation as well. With the recommendation ultimately to the superintendent from the team for renewal or, or it would be a non-renewal. So this is coming before the board, having examined the data, having looked at all things being considered equal, with a recommendation to enter into a limited contract of one year and to go forward with a vote of yes today. We will do a, a contract which will have to come back before the board for approval. And again, I already have my mental note of concerns.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, one more question if I could.
Okay.
Okay, so you have a review board that looks at all of this, or I'm just asking a charter review board for all of the charter schools?
And so what happens when a charter is up for renewal?
Yeah.
Is they work in conjunction with the district. We bring in teams from curriculum, assessment, finance, ESOL, ESE, all the way down.
Okay, 'cause I didn't know if you actually had its own little entity or whenever it comes up.
We work with all the.
You pull in people to look at all of this data.
Yes, ma'am.
So you had somebody looking at the financials?
Yes, ma'am. Absolutely, the finance department.
Okay.
I don't, I don't.
Right.
I'm Foreman.
So, so to Ms. Foreman's remarks, they looked at the fact that they're only a month and a half of funding.
Yes.
Legally, according to you, Mr. Tylobom, it has to be two months.
Well, at, at this, Mr. Cho, you wanna?
Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
For clarification, they would have, right now, their reserves, their calculated reserves, based upon what has been disclosed before this board, is that they'll run out of money a month and a half from now. Would that be a correct statement, Ms. Foreman?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So as a result, they've not gotten to ground zero or they can't meet their bills.
Right.
They're not in negative, they're not at the inability, so they've not come into a deteriorating financial condition because the legislature did not require them to have a fund balance like us. So their obligation is to be able to have a flat balance sheet every month balancing out to zero. Though it's not good practice, they are compliant with law right now. If they're able to meet their bills presently, that is the requirement. Well, this is coming before this board right now. They're able to meet their, they're, they're able to meet their bills. And I'm gonna repeat what, based upon my knowledge, I think Dr. Breslin, is that they are in the process of fundraising, knowing full well. They're not, they're not, they are very cognizant of the need to raise money for the school, as well as their academic grade.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, 'cause I have the same concern.
Yeah, I do wanna make sure, maybe this should have been preference, and I don't know if, uh, maybe the superintendent mentioned it in in other ways, in board briefings and things like that, but when, they've gone through a process with the district, with the people who are in charge of, of charter schools, and all the boxes are checked, to now it's coming to us saying, hey, we've looked at everything and we think that they should move on to get this contract. A year, five years, whatever, right? I don't see, I think it's, we get on a really slippery slope if all of a sudden we get recommendations from people who are doing the work for weeks and weeks and weeks on end, and then it comes to us and we're pulling the rug out saying, nope, sorry, nope, nope, I don't agree with that. I just, they're just illegally, I think we, we get into, to messes if we all of a sudden have people doing the work for us that are going through the process and then we pull the rug out from them and say, I don't agree with that, and, and we, we do something completely different. If the recommendation was to not do the, the, the contract, that'd be different. If there were means, if there was ways that we saw documentation, there isn't. So I just don't, I get we have concerns about certain things and that's not a question. I think we should absolutely have concerns. But I just, I feel like we're almost like debating to not allow, approve this. And then we, our staff has done their due diligence with the school. The school was in F last year. They've been in a school improvement plan for the last, this whole school year. There has been improvements. They are, so I just, and this is for all the schools. They all still went through the same process to get approval to have the next contract. And I feel like, I, I mean, I just, I, that's just my personal opinion. We start pulling the rug from our own employees who've gone through this whole process. I didn't, I, none of us five here walked through with these, these schools step by step to curriculum. We have people for that. We've gotta, we've, we, in my personal opinion, we've gotta trust that they did their due diligence. When I say they, Dr. Breslin, you're one of them, right? You went to the curriculum. We've gotta, we have to believe that they did the right thing and we're getting the approval from those staff members, 'cause we didn't do it. So I don't have anybody else lit up to speak on item number three, so I think we're ready, nope.
I just wanna let the board know, I, I am going to vote yes because of the, the legal constraints. Yeah, I don't wanna run afoul of the law. And, but I do, but my concerns are still here. And if it wasn't the requirements for, that Mr. Tylobom spoke about, I would have voted no. But I, but I will, I will have voted yes on this.
All right, so we do have it up on our screens now to vote for the approval to notify Visible Men Academy of intent to enter contract renewal discussions for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. And?
And again, I'm voting as.
That passes, passes unanimously. Thank you. Uh, moving on to number, item number four, approval to notify Oasis Middle School of intent to enter contract renewal discussions for the twenty-three through twenty-eight school years. Mr. Wagner?
Very good. The superintendent recommends approval to notify Oasis Middle School of the intent to enter into contract renewal discussions for the twenty-three, twenty-eight school years.
So moved.
A second.
We have a motion, we have a second, any discussion on item number four?
It's actually, I looked at the his.
Oh, I'm sorry, I don't have my speaker list up.
Okay.
Turn it to Goldman. Ms. Foreman is lit up, I'm sorry.
Number one, I wanna point out how well they performed academically.
Yes, ma'am.
In fact, I had mentioned it to Dr. Breslin after the scores came out. Said you need to go over and take a look at what these people are doing, but
This should be the example.
I have serious concerns about their finance. And while legally I may not be able to, to vote against it because of that, um, but there are just things that are very much a concern. Uh, last year they had a, a net loss of a hundred and forty-four thousand. That's out of, you know, total revenues of six hundred and thirteen thousand. This year they're continuing their losses. They are, um, loss for four months was a hundred and ten thousand. Fund balance remaining is two hundred and seventy-seven thousand excluding capital funds. So they have, so they're not at ground zero, but their financial statement, as a CPA, I might have had a going concern problem, uh, issue to talk about in a financial statement because, um, because of the loss. And the, in their M D N A, the management, I forget what it all stands for, but it's the management right up on it. They were anticipating an increase in funding because of an increase in FTE. Well, it didn't happen. Their FTE has gone down. Our review said that decrease in FTEs from survey two could affect the financial stability of the charter, which I definitely believe. Now, I wanna point out, and I hope Oasis is listening, that the, the monthly summary of charter school financial reports, the beginning balance, the beginning fund balance doesn't match your financial statement. They, they are, they are saying that they have a beginning fund balance of three hundred and eighty-eight thousand and their financial statement is actually two hundred and sixty-four thousand. And there has been a decrease so far this year of a hundred and seventy thousand, so that brings you down to about a fund balance of like roughly ninety thousand. So that, that should be a concern to them. And I think our district needs to be aware of it and work with them if appropriate. Other thing, okay, and this is, this may, may impact. There's debt in, that they have, and they have a long-term debt of one point three million dollars, which is on their building, okay? And the note matures October twenty twenty-four. They also have entered into finance on the telecommunications system and that matures in September twenty twenty-four. So unless they are able to renegotiate these, okay, they could have serious, serious problems. Additionally, you know, the executive director has made loans to them of a hundred and forty-one thousand. Uh, the loans are non-interest, final resolution of repayment has not been determined by the school board of directors. The loans are non-interest bearing and are not considered due until after June thirty twenty twenty-two, which was the financial statement. Because of the debt, maturity of debt coming up, okay? I would recommend that we make it a two-year contract. You know, and, and because you can't, if you start having serious financial problems, you're gonna end up with less money in the classroom in instruction and that's gonna affect what they're doing. And like I said, I commend them on their, on their scores, especially the ELA. You know, I was very impressed with that, but, uh, their enrollment's declining and they have debts coming due.
Thank you. And, uh,
Chair out of the room, go ahead.
Uh, and so I do wanna point out, and, and thank you, Mrs. Foreman, for those remarks. Because of their status as an A, their school grade status, the statute points to a fifteen-year automatic renewal, with the exception of if they have failure to meet generally accepted standards of fiscal management due to deteriorating financial conditions or financial emergencies pursuant to one zero zero two point three four five. That's why it was, it was not down to a five-year recommendation from the fifteen that the statute entitles them to. Am I saying that correctly, counsel?
You're, you're mirroring exactly what I have in front of me for those exact reasons.
Okay, so I just wanted to, to point out that that, that's the way the language is, is written. But I, I do hear your two and of course, whatever the board approves, that's what we'll do.
Yeah, anybody else lit up?
Uh, sorry.
It's all right.
Nope. Ms. Bray, you spoke.
Okay.
Okay. So, uh,
She hasn't.
No, I have not.
You have not, okay.
I was going to, but you were, go ahead.
You may be having to go somewhere or do something. So before we move on to your, to your question, just real quick, I wanna go ahead and, and just let everybody know what Mr. Barber just told me, and we can ask him any questions, he's here. There was a six-car, uh, train derailment in South Manatee County. Just happened within the last hour. The reason I'm bringing it up is 'cause it, it's, we don't know the exact spot, um, but it's relatively close to Canaan Elementary. As of now, there's no spillage. We have been told that we don't need to do anything with the school. But, Mr. Barber, is there anything I missed there that you wanna? I just wanna, we wanna make sure everybody's aware of it, so you're not getting blown up.
What kind of products?
Okay, I was, I was at the baseball game where the superintendent was throwing out her, for, you know, her final first pitch with the Pirates. Uh, when we got word, Paul D'Amico got word from our security people that there had been a trail, a train derailment. It's in southern county. Now, our closest school is Canaan Elementary. We don't know exactly how far it is from the derailment. But they said some of the cars did contain propane, but just got a call from, again, from our district security. They have talked to the head of emergency management for the county who's on scene. She is saying there is no spillage at, at this point. They, they have noticed no spillage. So she's saying that there's no need to, you know, close down Canaan at this point or they could, can actually continue their school day. So that's the state of the situation as we know it right now.
Thank you. And obviously, we don't, I mean, we don't know, but that track, if you follow the track, it's kind of runs along with the, the, the airport and crosses Talabas right there, so I'm assuming it's maybe somewhere down there.
Has, uh, contact gone out to the parents of students at Canaan?
Not yet. Again, we're, we're just finding out and one of the very important things in, in, you know, a scenario like this is we'll make sure we get the facts, you know, and so we will send a message to parents. That's why, you know, I'm here, I came back. First thing I wanted to do is make sure you guys were aware and then I will work with the school to send out a message to all parents.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barber. Ms. Bray, you were on the, on the board.
Right, on, on, on Oasis. Okay, you're saying that, and this is to you as well, Mr. Tylobom, because they are Okay, you're saying that, and this is to you as well, Mr. Titlebaum, because they are an A student. They automatically get the fifteen-year renewal? Is that what you're saying?
Unless there is a concern with uh deteriorating financials, and there's specific language. Uh financial emergency is how the statute i- is worded, or deteriorating financial conditions. Uh then yes, they would be entitled to a fifteen-year automatic renewal as an A school.
Okay. So I guess the problem I have with these charter renewals is, and I know we have to follow statute, all of that. But when we have, you know, decline and students and financial concerns. You know, that kind of borders are the the concern I have with the fifteen-year. I mean, does it, can we modify that to a five-year instead?
Ms. Bray?
Well, right, I'm just saying, at any time.
Mr. Chair, may I proceed? Okay, this, the recommendation actually is a five-year based upon the financials at this point in time. But bear in mind, that that school is an A school.
Right.
And their population is relatively small. And it's it's the first time that they actually are an A school. So the term has been limited to address the financial concerns that were revealed to the superintendent's office through the um through Dr. Breslin's team. So we are, we are being very proactive with this.
Right.
And the basis of it is, in fact, we're looking at um for Florida Statute one thousand two point thirty-three. Um which could lead to the the concerns over their financials. And bear in mind, any school that's insolvent, this board will take action on. They this this doesn't require a ninety-day notice. This board, through a duly noticed meeting, may take no, may take action upon a school that cannot meet their debts. They, this board has and it and it will.
Okay. Because we just had an extensive conversation about uh Visible Men that has sixty-five students, that's an F. Now we're talking about an A school with forty-four students that has, how many reserved? I'm sorry, Ms. Foreman, you had said?
Um.
Yeah.
I'd say it 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 would work out to be about ninety thousand.
Ninety, okay. And that would be their two month, it would be within their two-month dollars for their debt versus their cash.
Well, I think you got to get down.
Down into that a little farther, yeah.
Not meeting their debt obligations for two months.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
They've got the money to pay.
Alright, right.
Obligations.
Okay. Alright, I ju- I just want to understand that. I know you all did your due diligence in looking through all of this. Okay, myself and I can, guess I can speak for Mr. Chairman.
Right.
This is a new thing for us. But I also go through other things in another arena for renewals of charters. I just want to make sure that all of these charters, uh I'm not just the ones that are here today. That we are actually doing our due diligence as school board members. And, you know, I thank Ms. Foreman for looking at the financials. Um I was looking at their website, okay? Like pro- like the school before. They're a nonprofit. I tried to find, you know, financials. I didn't go so deep as Ms. Foreman did through our website. But I just want everyone to know that we're looking at this, and then we've got others that we have have questions on too, coming up. So, I mean, if they're meeting their minimums, you're telling us, and Mr. Titlebaum is saying if they're meeting their minimum qualifications financially, we should just go ahead and give them the fifteen, but this one is a five-year.
This one is is five.
A five-year.
The notes.
Alright, so. Okay, I would be okay with the five-year. I thought, I was looking at the another one, so, alright. That's all I had to.
And and I think some of the frustration you feel is, we don't, I don't, that we don't have an option, like we, our hands are tied.
Right.
And that's in, that's, we didn't create that. That's leg- that's that's legislature over years. And so um so, yeah, but I I hear the frustration.
Yeah.
We just can't legally do anything. And and I know that none of us want to get into.
About.
You know, I wasn't on the board, thankfully, uh last time. So. And I don't see anybody else lit up, uh for item number four. So if we can go ahead and, oh, I'm sorry, snuck in on me.
I thought Ms. Fore- I just hit it. I thought Ms. Foreman had suggested that we limit this to two, but did you want to make? But we can't, so the fu- so five is the minimum legally that we can, is that true, Mr. Titlebaum? Five is, I didn't, I didn't understand that from the conversation. We could do one, two, because they're having financial difficulty.
I think there's, I I think there's a compromise itself as to, five years is the minimum renewal period for most schools. So that was a default. That's why it was used. Five, if you were a school that was, let's just say, a a school that was a B, you would have a five-year re- you would have a five-year.
Okay.
So that would, that would be the the term, I I think, I'm sorry, say it was a C, it would be a five-year term. So we took them down to the minimum renewal term. That would be acceptable. When it came to Visible Men's Academy, they triggered a different area statute. Um and that allowed us to bring it to a lesser amount. So the five years would be the minimal renewal period um that would be, that would be provided by statute for a for a school.
In their fi- in Oasis financial situation, this board doesn't have the legal authority to reduce it to two or.
I I I will say this, that um based upon what we're seeing right now, that the administration has made the recommendation for five years. And um I would support that legally as well. Um for a shorter term, in this particular circumstance with the high with the high performing, um I think we're going to get to some gray water.
Okay. So so what you're saying, it would, if we were to take it down to two or three, and it was challenged legally or something, we might have difficulty defending our position. Is that?
I would.
Kind of what I hear you saying?
I would say to you that I'd be your lawyer.
Right.
But I'd I'd always like to win my case.
Right.
Uh so I think that the recommendation from the administration was absolutely spot-on. And and for for this lawyer, I completely support it.
Okay.
Yeah, but I do understand the concerns as well. But I'm, that's why I once again reiterated, if they fail to meet their bills financially, this board doesn't have to worry about it being a one-year, two-year, three-year, four-year, or five-year. They will be, they will be terminated by this school, by the, by this school board upon the majority vote for the failure to be, to be able to meet their financial obligations. So it's really not going to matter in the end.
So what I just really want to understand, because I think I mentioned this before, I like to watch Law and Order. I binge on it sometimes, you know, but we could legally take it down to one or two. However, it might cause us legal issues down the road. And so the recommendation that you, as the school system lawyer, is this is a good legal place to fall. So that if we ever had to defend ourselves legally, we feel this is a good place. There's a difference between what we could do and what is probably the prudent thing to do.
I think that the prudent thing and the correct thing is to follow the recommendation for the five years. And I don't think that would be an issue for us in terms of the legality of it. I I support that.
But we could legally. That's what I'm trying to, you know, I just want to know, what is our power as a board? It affect, it might, it won't affect my decision today, but I just would like to know what the law says. Can we do it? Could we take them to one, two, or three or not? Whether it's a smart idea, that's a different question. I'm asking you, can we do it legally if we were wanting to do it for some reason?
I would, I would not advise it.
Not advise it. But does the law give us the legal ability to do it?
I do not, I, this is, this is this lawyer's opinion, only my opinion. I think you, I think it'd be problematic, and the answer is, I don't think it's, I don't think it's supported.
Okay.
Legally. I think five years would be supported. I I think that anything less than five years would be very problematic. If challenged and to be, and could potentially be reversed. And I wouldn't want to give bad advice to the board. And I was consulted, I was.
I'll talk to you afterwards. Someone got my question. Is it legally, can we legally do it? One, does yes or no? Yes or no? We could take it to one year if we wanted to?
I do not believe you have the legal right to do it.
Okay.
I I do not believe that based on these, based upon the high-performing status. But however, based upon the financials, if they were already in deteriorating, if they are, were already there, the answer is, I think it'd be a different ballgame. But they're not there yet.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, I I just want to point out that uh I think the future will dictate the uh the future, financial future will dictate what what happens with this school. We're uh actually, right now, I think we're a good advertisement for them because they're doing so well, you know, academically, so they could, they could. If if there's an increase in enrollment, I want credit, okay? Um but um um the, you know, they're going to need something before that mortgage comes due in twenty-twenty-four. And um maybe they have something, something planned, but uh worse, you know. Uh but uh I don't, I don't think we have to worry, you know, to worry for them. I'm sure they have plenty of their own, so. Um but we just need to keep an eye on it, that's all.
Does anyone have a comment?
Ms. Bray?
Mr. Dunning. To Mr. Tatum's point. At any school, at any of these charters. Because the next one is the fifteen-year one. Can we legally take their charter down from the automatic renewal of five years, fifteen years based on information we have here? The answer is no, I hear him saying.
The the uh, well, there's a procedure for terminating or non-renewal. And you have to follow that procedure.
Right. I just don't want us to get into a predicament that's I'm sure we can all say. So that's why I guess we're being so inquisitive about, let's make sure that the school knows that we're looking at your academics. And so is Dr. Breslin's team and the finances, all of that. Um it's just not an automatic thing with with me. It's, yeah, we got to follow the law, and I understand that. Uh I am a strong supporter of charter schools. If they're performing and they're financially sound and and I did, I've talked to people who work here, who have worked here, I'll say have worked. And and students that have gone there, their uh parents, I've talked to their parents. It's a good school, but financially, you know, is a concern. And um I just want to know where our leverage is. If something starts going astray. It's been noted that, okay, financially, they have to have two months in reserve. I wish it was a little more than that, because that would actually scare me if they didn't have enough to cover a disaster. So, okay, so legally, no, we could never modify this. We have to go on just the district's recommendation totally?
Well, can I just say, can I ask, almost like piggybacking or answering it maybe? Just because we approve them of fifteen years, twenty years, fifty years.
Okay.
At some point in that timeframe, if they're go two months without paying bills or they they're, they have an F, two Fs within that fifty years of approval, we can yank them. They're done. Because they didn't, uh they did, they, there's documentation there of them failing at that, what they were supposed to be doing. So I, this this approval of five, ten, twenty, I think is a moot point because it's going to come out in the wash. If they're not doing what they're supposed to be doing in two years, four years, eight years, we're going to know because we get their stuff every ye- every year. They their their academics and their financials come to us. So even with what we're looking at nineteen point four right here, maybe twenty-twenty-six comes along. And that's their first F, and then twenty-twenty-seven, and that's their second, and then they're out before the first five years anyway, so. And I hate, I'm I'm just hypothetically saying that, by the way, Oasis Middle. Um I hope it doesn't happen. But so I don't, so I don't think, I don't think we need to worry. We do have power when the time is right. And the time is not right right now for us to pull. Um Ms. Messenger, you were lit up. Did you unlit yourself?
Well, because you said a lot of what I just felt like needed to be said is, we're spending a lot of time concerned about things that we really don't have control over at this point. Doesn't mean it won't change at some point, but the law says we have ninety days when that happens, so. Um but I do want to correct one thing that I think I heard. The law is not, deteriorating financial conditions is not, you have two months of reserve. They have to have, they have to be in the red for two months for it to be issued. It's not whether they have reserves. It's, they can have no reserves. That is allowed. That is, that is, that is okay. It is only if they're in the red for two months that then we can act in any way, and the action is try to work with them and creating a plan. But that, there's a lot of other steps before it ever gets to that point where it would come before us where the staff would say, hey, you have the right to close them. Right now, we are being told we don't. That they have met all of the things that they're supposed to meet. Uh they have a thorough team of experts, much better than any of us up here, that know these types of things. Have reviewed all of those things at all of these sites and have brought these recommendations in front of us based on the current laws. I understand there might be a desire to go outside those laws or, you know, or meet the law right where it is, but that's, we have to, we have to follow whatever the law is on these things, and if you don't agree with that, you're later on in the agenda, we're approving or maybe approving, you all go into Tallahassee, you're going to sit down with the legislators, talk about that, say, hey, we don't have a say in this or that or whatever, and have those conversations, but this is, this, this is not, um you said it so much better than me. This is not there there, we can deal with it at any point when the point arises. This is not it, according to staff, who are experts in all of these different areas.
I'm okay with giving those concerns. We we definitely need to give concerns. We have concerns. I mean, that's, there's hundred percent valid points of what Ms. what Ms. Foreman's brought up and and so.
I want to reiterate one thing, if I may, Mr. Chair. That by statute, the charter is subject to annual review. It may be terminated during the term of the charter pursuant to section eight. Section eight is the trigger section for the for the financials. So a- again, I'm, Ms. Messenger, I'm going to reiterate what you and Mr. Chode have both said. The, it's not, the relevancy of the term of the, of the re- of the renewal is not what's concerning. Because you may take action, should the time come and should it be necessary. And it's not a ninety-day notice. It would be, it would be a notice of termination based upon the financial deterioration that has existed and the inability for a plan not to be followed. It would be a corrective action plan. It would have been approved by the state. If they can't make their bills and improve, it'll become technically health, safety, and welfare at that point. And which which you, which this board has in the past.
Alright, um no speakers are lit up, so discussion on nineteen point four, the approval to notify Oasis Middle of intent to enter contract renewal discussions for twenty-twenty-three through twenty-twenty-eight school year. We can now vote on, and it passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Moving on to item number five, Mr. Wagner?
Very good. The superintendent recommends approval to notify Imagine Charter Schools at Lakewood Ranch for the intent to enter into a contract renewal discussions for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-thirty-eight school years.
So moved. I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes.
Oh, good. Ms. Trainum's first.
Dr. Rosen, I just wanted to, I don't know if there's a link between this school, this Imagine Charter School at Lakewood Ranch, which, by the way, I too am a fan of charter schools, just so public knows. But i- in this letter from Commissioner Diaz, it says, "The Florida Department of Education recently became aware of content within the Edge Annuity Imagine Learning Purpose Prep Social and Emotional Learning Curriculum that upon preliminary review appears contrary to Florida law, districts and charter schools may be using this curriculum as part of their teaching and learning process." So can you assure us, or do you need to go back and look and make sure that that isn't, because this just came out on the twenty-seventh, that that's not part of their curriculum?
So we will certainly share anyth- any, any information the state hands down. Uh we share with charter schools and ask they comply with the law.
Okay, great. I just want to make sure that. Because the word imagine is in both of these schools. I don't know if there's like a charter school curriculum or something that's out there that that they use commonly within this? Okay. Okay, great. That's all I had. Thank you.
Because there's a lot of Imagine schools.
Yes, yes.
I don't know if they're connected.
They are, they are connected.
No, but I'm saying with the curriculum part.
No, no. These two schools in this county are 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 related.
Right.
Yes, sir.
But I don't know if they've got their own curriculum like that.
Yeah, I was going to say, Imagine Learning is a computer-based program typically for ES, ELLs and ESOL students.
Gotcha.
Uh.
Yeah, we do have in in different Imagine than this Imagine.
Right.
There is a program with Imagine with ESOL, and then there is, then there's the program with the the, that Mr. Diaz is referring to. So it seems to be a frequent, a frequent word, uh but they're all.
Different word than Imagine.
They're all separate.
Ms. Bray was, oh, I'm sorry, did you do everything else?
I'm done, thank you.
Ms. Bray?
Yeah, um again, I just want, just for
Yes ma'am.
Clarity, I don't want anyone to think we're picking on any one particular school. And I looked at uh what the progression rate and all of those kind of things online, not within the district. What other people are. What other people are saying about these schools.
Yes, ma'am.
Other organizations, and this one was a four out of 10 rating, and we're gonna renew it for 15 years. Is that correct? This one's 15 years and?
Yes, ma'am, the recommendation is 15 years for this school.
Okay, and that has the bigger, uh. That has 500 students for K through 5, okay. And again, to Mr. Tatum's point, I was gonna ask the same thing. Is there any connection between the letter that we got from Mr. Diaz and, and our, uh, the school is in our county?
No, no, ma'am.
No, ma'am, okay, all right, that's all I had.
And no other speakers are lit, so we can go ahead and vote. On item number five, approval to notify Imagine Charter School at Lakewood Ranch, intent to enter in their contract renewal discussions for 2023 through 2038 school year. And that passes unanimously, thank you. Uh, item number six, Mr. Wagner.
Very good, item number six, the superintendent recommends approval to notify Manatee School of the Arts and Sciences, Sciences of the intent to enter into a contract renewal discussions for the 2023, 2028 school years.
So moved.
Second.
You have a motion and a second, any discussion, and I have one, Ms. Spray.
Okay. Am I, is this a school that's on Haven and, um, am I right, is that the school? Okay, this one is located, this, this one I did not know, cause I'm, these two I get confused with the School of Arts and Science and a School of Arts, they're two different campuses.
Yes, ma'am.
Correct?
Yes, this is located at 3700 32nd Street West.
Okay, are they, I mean, Manatee School of Arts, are they connected? Do they share the same curriculum at all?
No.
No, ma'am. Separate.
Separate curriculum, totally.
Separate review, separate curriculum.
All right.
You're looking at a, a 6 through 12 versus a K through 5 curriculum, K through 5 curriculum for Manatee School of Arts and Sciences.
Okay, the reason I'm asking this in conjunction with item 6 and 7. Some of the curriculum that I was made aware of was that one of these schools, uh, actually teaches the 1619 project, are you aware of that?
No, ma'am, I am not.
Okay. Is that something that you can look into, to see if that's being done?
Yes, now, we reviewed their social studies curriculum, and we did make sure that social studies curriculum aligned with any Florida standards and statutory requirements, and did not note, we would have made note uh, had there been any misalignment or anything against, uh, what the D O V has indicated as what we can teach in schools.
Okay.
Social studies was reviewed.
I mean, it's my duty to bring this up, because it was brought to my attention.
Okay.
While I was in Palmetto, um. There were people there with a booth that had Manatee School of Arts or Science, whichever one, and they were promoting that curriculum by wearing t-shirts. So that, you know, rang a bell and rose concern with people up there while I was talking. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention and to the public's attention, that we're looking at that as well. And according to you, as our expert in, in curriculum, they are not teaching that platform.
When we reviewed the, the curriculum and made classroom visits, that was not noted anywhere on the visits or within the documents provided.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, that's all I had, thank you.
And I don't have any other lit speakers. So we can go on, go ahead and vote on item number six, approval to notify Manatee School of Arts and Sciences of intent to enter contract renewal discussions for 2023 through 2028 school year. And that passes unanimously, thank you, item number seven, Mr. Wagner.
Very good, the recommendation is, the superintendent recommends approval to notify Manatee School of the Arts of the intent to enter into contract renewal discussions for the 2023 to 2038 school years.
So moved.
I'll second.
And discussion, Mr. Tatum.
Okay, so in there, it's either the application or the package. And I, I just wanna go over a, a few notes here real quick before I make my comments. So we're, we are constitutional officers, I'm kinda talking to the public in general right now, but we're constitutional officers, so we take an oath to support and defend the Constitution, United States of America. The U.S. Constitution and the 14th Amendment provides equal protection of the laws to all people, regardless of, of race or gender. The federal civil rights laws, uh, prohibit discrimination based on race and gender. And we get federal money, and I imagine the school probably gets some federal money too, with grants and stuff like that. Florida state law, we read, I think in our last meeting or workshop, that Florida state law prohibits within the schools, public school system discrimination based on race or gender. And our school district policy also prohibits discrimination based on race or gender. So if you go to, and this is the, uh, it looks like their charter renewal application. If you go to page on the, of the application 41. It says, "It is a policy of the Board of Directors that the Manatee School for the Arts does not discriminate on the basis of race, color, religion, national or ethnic origin, age, gender, marital status, sexual preference, political affiliation, handicap, disabled or Vietnam veteran status, or any other factors which cannot lawfully form a basis for an admissions or employment decision." And that's key right there, an employment decision, the school is an equal opportunity employer. And then you go down to, actually, you go up to page 36 apparently, I'm kinda doing a word search. And it says, on page 36 of the application, in paragraph E, on that page. Diversity and gender are also considerations as we seek to have a governing board that mirrors our student population. So those two things are not in accordance with each other, because the statement that they just made about not discriminating based on race and gender, and then they actually state it right in their application, when we're, when we're seeking board members, we are going to potentially discriminate based on race and gender. So I would just like to point that out, and I would, I would ask your team in the future, I, I know you're looking at a lot of things. Just keep that, that kinda stuff in mind, if you would please, because.
Will do.
As a constitutional officer, I feel obligated to keep that kinda stuff in mind, so. And so, I, I would like to see some of the curriculum of the school, because I too have heard the anecdotal stories of, of some of the things that are going on there. I trust that Dr. Breslin's team has looked at it, but I might just wanna take a look at the curriculum if that's, if it's possible, just to take a look at it and see what's going on there, so. And I'm just bringing that to attention, to your attention, Dr. Breslin, my comments here, as well as to the school that, for me, and we may be legally constrained, but this stuff just isn't gonna fly anymore. This focus on race and gender and diversity and equity and inclusion. The federal, the U.S. Constitution, the federal civil rights laws, the state of Florida laws and our school policy says we will not discriminate based on race or gender, and we need to move all of this stuff out of everything that we're doing. And especially this kinda stuff, so, thank you for allowing me to make my comments.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
Ms. Foreman?
Uh, I just have a quick question, uh, the, uh, are the charter schools required to publish their curriculum as we are?
No, ma'am, I, I've seen nothing to point to that requirement. That could change, uh, with current legislation that's going forth, but at this point, I don't, I don't see that requirement related to instructional materials.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Spray?
As part of my question was, do we, can we actually access their curriculum at all? Doesn't sound like it, um, and again, I'm a strong proponent of charter schools. If they can meet a need that parents want, fine, this particular school, uh, talked to a grandmother. There's, they're, they can't wait till their grandchild's done with school there. Because from the time they enrolled to the time they are graduating, it has, they feel that it has deteriorated. Um, and this is the one up there, and I asked what was the problem, and it's more focused on just putting kids through. Few kids do really great, but there's some that struggle as well. So they brought that to my attention, that they, and I was real shocked at that, because their grade uh, on other sources are, they're a 5 of 10. Out of all of the ones we've talked about, Oasis and this one were the two top ranked. But to hear a grandparent bring it to my attention, I mean, specifically brought it to my attention.
I'm sorry to interrupt, when you say rank, what, what did you?
I'm looking at outside sources, uh, schoolgrades.com, greatschools.org, something like that. People that actually look at what they're doing, uh, based on test scores, and they have a scale 1 to 10. So that's what I look at, um, cause I think that we can look at the district. You know, we've got all the strong support here, but what is the other places saying? You know, we're always gonna say we look great, we look good, but what are people actually saying about us? I, I'm interested in that too, I like that outside opinion. And when a parent or a grandparent brings it to my attention, that they can't wait till their school, daughter or granddaughter graduates because it's deteriorated, I'm like, wow, this is one of our better performing schools. So I was surprised to hear that, and everyone's got a different opinion, you know, that's just the way it is. But, um, I, again, not picking on any one particular school, that's why I wanted to raise my hand to at least say, you know, I get the feedback, I share that feedback, and I want the public to know that we are listening and we are watching at the dollars and, and the cents. Are we making sense of the curriculum that we're, but I am concerned about that curriculum, because it's to my understanding, that 1619 project is in that school, one of those two schools. And whether we wanna see a book about it is one thing. But is a teacher or, or, or somebody teaching it, that's two different things. Okay, so that's just all I have about that.
Thank you.
Mr. Tatum, oh, you, I thought you took it off.
May I address what Ms. Ms. Spray said? We're all going to hear anecdotal
Yeah.
stories, okay? Um, and publishing reviews on the internet can be done anonymously. I have concern when, as a board member, we come out in public and we state this stuff. Because we haven't vetted it. If you hear something like this, if we hear, I'm gonna, not gonna address it, if we hear something like that, take it to the superintendent, and they will research it and discuss it with you. I can tell you on Manatee School for the Arts, I have, and I would recommend it, uh, anyone, because all of the charter schools are happy to invite us in their doors. And I've had an extensive tour of Manatee School for the Arts, um, which was phenomenal. They are an excellent charter school and a real credit to, to, to our community. And they fulfill a need that perhaps we can't fill for, for other students, so. So I would, I would ask that we not give stories without checking them out. And, and, and getting, and somebody can go to Manatee School for the Arts and say, are you teaching this? So that's, that's my two cents, thank you.
Um, I guess, one thing before I go, Mr. Tatum was up, um. I, obviously, I understand our position when it comes to the charter schools. We are a conduit, we are a flow-through. Whether a charter school excels or doesn't, in my personal opinion, is not a reflection on the district, because we don't manage that school. Our superintendent, they have their own principal, their own superintendent, their own hiring process, their own etcetera. We don't control that. That's my opinion, a good thing for both sides, because I believe in the competition aspect, there are schools are doing great. MSA is one of them, they've been doing it for a long time, and that's why charter schools were built. They said, we could do this by ourselves, we don't need the district. So I don't, I don't see when, when charter schools do good or bad, it's a reflect, cause we don't have anything to really do with them, other than just saying, here's the money the state's giving you, right? They're gonna either have good management or bad management. And the only thing we do is look at this approval process and say, approval. Well, I would imagine after next year, we ain't even gonna do that, because the state's gonna have their own thing, and everyone's just gonna apply to there. So to be honest with you, that's gonna be taken right out of our hands anyways, is my gut. So I don't, I don't think that, that we have anything to do with them, because the charter school would certainly probably say, it was all the, we did it, we didn't have assistance from the, the, the district, right? We didn't, so, I, I don't, I just wanna make sure, I, I, me personally, I want everybody to, to exceed and educate our kids, that's the goal. But, um, I don't see, uh, charter schools failing or not failing or exceeding or not exceeding because of what we did, cause we did, we didn't staff them, we didn't, we didn't do the things we do in our normal schools. So I just wanna make sure that was, Mr. Tatum?
I have a question from the legal team over here.
Yes, sir.
Is it possible, so we're in contract negotiations with them, to satisfy some of the issues about the curriculum that, that we're discussing today? Can we require them to make their curriculum visible online as is required for the public schools? Could that be something we can put in the contract? Maybe the answer is no.
No, our, um. I think it would be best if I just send the board all of the required statute by charter schools. They are regulated differently than we are, and we have X amount of authority over them. So I think, and right now, we're just letting the board know we're up for renewal. So we're just talking about the renewal of the charter contracts. So what I recommend is we send all the board members all the statute. If you have any concerns about there, because these are existing charters, these are not new charters. If there's any concern of any language, uh, I think I would feel more comfortable you giving me that, and then we discuss it with the Department of Edu- Education, they have a department over charter. So we'll be more than happy to let them weigh in, but they have been approved, the Department of Education is aware of all of our existing approval, and I think that's probably the better way to go about it. If you have any concerns, send them, and then we'll convey them to them, and let them weigh in on what we could change or require in today's landscape, and, and because there are some nuances. But we really can authorize them to do anything but what we're legally allowed to let them do. Whether we agree with it or not. We can only follow what the legal extent of the law allows.
Okay, so, so then the answer to my question is, I should kinda after, at a, at a separate time, ask that question, are we legally allowed to ask charter, to require charter schools within the contract that we sign with them to make their curriculum accessible to the public?
And I can certainly check with the Department of Education on that, and, and see, um, i- if that's something that we are allowed, and if we are, and, and we, then I will request them to do that.
Yeah, because it's not, I mean, they still have the autonomy to have their own curriculum, but it would be nice, it would be visible to the public, because they are using public money, so we're not controlling them in the sense of
Right.
developing their curriculum, but it'd be nice to see it, and that would satisfy, satisfy some of the issues maybe that.
Many, many, many things, the Department of Education, when they write updated statute are very clear, when they expect the charters to comply in the same regard as us. And sometimes they don't specify, but it doesn't mean that the expectation isn't there. I, I think it would just be better for me to ask before we say, you're required to do something that we may not have the authority to require.
Right, and I did, I, while you were gone, and maybe you saw this, did you see the?
All part of it, yes, sir.
Did you see the letter from Commissioner Diaz about?
Yes.
Making sure that charter schools are also included in complying with the law.
Absolutely, absolutely.
That's kinda what I'm getting at.
Absolutely, yes, sir.
Great, all right, that's all, thank you.
Ms. Spray, you were.
Just one other comment that you had made, that the charters are their own entities and all of that. But their performance does. But their performance does reflect on us as a district. If they're doing well, it looks well on us. If they're doing badly, it looks badly on us because they do come through us. If they didn't come through us, we wouldn't be having this on our agenda. So I just wanted to make that point, but yes, they do. You know, they may just be a pass through, they get funding from the state, but they end up on our agenda. So it reflects on us too, if they're doing poorly. And/or if they're teaching things that they should not be teaching. That's still our students, as far as I'm concerned. Because charter schools were included into the millage as well. So they're getting funding through that source too. So monitoring their finance, their growth and their successes is all in our preview too, just check that, we gotta check that, we gotta check that. So I kinda wanted, had to say that they do reflect on our success of our district. Because they're included, when you include student count, if I remember from the workshop, when you say we have fifty-three thousand students, that includes all of the charter schools.
Absolutely.
Correct?
And they are public schools and they are part of the district.
Right.
And the state generally is very clear on the expectations. But they are separate than us. So in some areas, they do have latitude and different discretion than we do. But these are new parameters that have recently come out. So we will definitely follow up to see, and for their sake, they wanna comply with the expectation of the law as well.
I think the consensus is that if we can view our, you know, people can view our curriculum online, but we cannot charter schools. That's kind of a, hmm, that's a little cloud to me that maybe we should blow away and let the sun in and see what they're actually teaching. That would be my assessment of that, instead of the garden, I use clouds.
Messager said this earlier, we get a chance to say that to the people who make the laws and make the decisions.
And I plan to. Well, I plan to.
Because I agree with you, hey, if we gotta do it, why shouldn't they?
Right, exactly.
I don't have anybody else lit up, so item number seven, approval to notify Manatee School for the Arts of intent to enter contract renewal discussions for the twenty twenty-three, twenty-three eight school year. Passes unanimously, five zero, thank you very much. Thanks, Dr. Reslin. Move into business, item number one, the approval of travel expenses associated with the school board members attendance at the Florida School Boards Association, FSBA thirty-sixth Annual Day in the Legislature, March thirteenth through seventeen, twenty twenty-three, at the A.C. Hotel Marriott Tallahassee, Florida, not to exceed nine thousand. I know, well, I'll just add, I think there's four of us currently signed up to go. So with that, I'll wait for a motion.
I moved.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion?
Yes, I look forward to it. But one of the things that occurred to me is we developed our, this board's legislative platform, but never voted on it. So I find that kinda, you know, I find that a concern. But secondly, the thing that I wanna make sure that when we are speaking with our legislators, okay, that we stick to our platform and not express personal things that we would like to see changed. I know that one of our board members is really strong on the sunshine. But I don't want our conversations to go that way, so I'm just gonna put that out there.
Hey, I've got, Ms. Messenger?
You're right, it never did come before us for a vote, that was something that I had inquired Mr. Chapman about, he just left. And he felt as if he got enough feedback and consensus from the board. Cause he's already presented that legislative platform to the delegation.
Well, I did to the delegation, yeah.
So, you're right, you did, so I think just about that part.
Oh yeah, we'll vote that way.
Oh yeah, more money and. Ms. Spray?
To your point, Ms. Forman, and to, I know, Mr. Jaden's. This is our chance to, I know we got our legislative ask that we, that Mr. Churchill presented, I was there when he did that. But it's our chance to meet with them. I understand I'll have other chances, but I will be their advocating for our district and the money that we want as a whole. But I will also be advocating that, like the school charter schools, the discussion we just had about charter schools, is that a possibility that down the road that might happen? And I mean, I'm gonna be up there, I can talk to them. It doesn't necessarily have to be in my school board capacity. I have other things I wanna ask them too, outside of my role as a school board member. So yeah, I'm going up there for the district. But I also have other legislators in other districts that I know throughout this state that I will be talking to about what are other districts asking for. Who knows, they might be asking for the same thing we're asking for and there might be a law that they could, you know, generally change or something.
I'll get to you, one second, I don't wanna put words in her mouth, but I know that from experience of last year, we got hijacked in one of our meetings. And we weren't even able to, now this representative, I've talked to personally many times about things, but it's our chance with our lobbyists, you get about fifteen minutes and you're out. So we did get hijacked, I'm not gonna say any districts or anything like that who were involved. And it wasn't any of us, like our board. But that's how I took your comment, Ms. Forman, just we get like fifteen, twenty minutes, we're in, we're out. And I do, we do have a really good agenda, or excuse me, priorities. And so I just wanna make, I agree, I think we definitely wanna nail the ones we wanna talk about. But that doesn't mean off the cuff after etcetera.
That's what I'm going.
No, and these meetings, like you said, fifteen minutes, we're in, we're out. We, as a board, we have come up with these, you know, as our platform. And deviating from that with personal thoughts, I will sit next to you and I'll stomp on your feet, okay? You know, because we are there to represent the district in our legislative platform. I'll take her, Mr. Cho, you take him and we'll keep you in line. I wear heels.
I know, that's why.
Yeah, but no, we've.
No, I don't want anybody to misunderstand, I understand the fifteen minutes.
You have plenty of opportunity to deal with our legislators and to express your request. But you're not representing the school board's requests, okay? If you.
One of my line items on our, that's what I'm talking about.
Okay, well, I'm talking, we have six items on.
Yeah, and I'm gonna advocate for that.
Fifteen minutes is not enough time to go through.
Oh, I know, I know.
I don't have anybody, oh, nobody else lit up to speak? So let's go ahead and vote on the approval of travel expenses associated with the school board members attendance at the FSBA thirty-sixth Annual Legislature, March thirteenth through seventeen, twenty twenty-three in Tallahassee, not to exceed nine thousand. And it is approved unanimously, thank you very much. Workshop items, we obviously, this coming Friday, we have our next workshop, Impact F's FSBA study that we've all gotten some of the results from and stuff. Some interesting stuff there, if you haven't started reading it. The one document I think we got Friday was extremely long. And then we're gonna continue with the strategic plan, push back the audit committee procedures, we'll fit that in somewhere. I do wanna say that we spoke about it after the resolution of the cops and will in March fit in, the last one in March will fit in the Palmasola. So that way we can give the Jay Glover, give them as much time possible to say, here's kinda the number we're thinking about. I know we did not to exceed a hundred seventy-five million. But we'll be able to give them a better number. So any other workshops that you, we got FSBA multiple weeks after that, obviously dealing with the new superintendent. So the only other item that I wanted to bring up for the board is, and it kinda goes into that. Ms. Spray, I see you're lit up, I'll.
That's alright, go ahead.
I'll bring you one second, but I just wanna make sure this was to the board because there is a timeline on this. And, oh my gosh, okay. So the master board training, got an email about that and if we want to get on their schedule for the master board training. The deadline for submitting intent to do master board training is March sixth. My thought process was that we'd probably wanna do it with the new superintendent is hired. So my thought was to say, yes, we wanna do it and see when their times were and ask them to maybe have us, obviously, after the last half of the year. So that way we could have the new superintendent in place. And for those of you who don't know about the two new members who have never done the master board training, it's a really, I jumped into it, obviously, at the last like two or three, I still got my name on the plaque. But it's where we five sit together with the superintendent, obviously a facilitator. And it is very much learning how to work with each other, learning the roles, it's fantastic. I would have done it starting in November if we didn't have another superintendent moving forward, you know, six months later. So I do think, to be honest with you, it's something that I would say every board should do at the beginning of a year in January. Because, especially after election years, when you got new members and everything changes, it's a really, I took away a lot of it and I didn't even get to do some of it, the batteries and coloring and stuff, whatever. So I'm really excited about it, so I would just, I kinda get a consensus, yes, we wanna do it. But we don't know the time yet because obviously we wanna have a new superintendent. I would admit, this honors that probably your recommendation too. So I just wanna make sure, I know that's not a workshop item, but it does, it's not a workshop, it's like an extra meeting. So.
And it's four days, the training is four.
Yeah, like different days, yeah, overtime. So I just wanna make you all aware of that, that that's something I do wanna sign up for, but we'll wait to start it until new superintendent. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Spray, I'm sorry.
We're looking at the workshop item request list, is that what you're referring to, correct?
That's what I'm looking at.
Alright.
When you have any new requests that you'd like to get on there, that is given to the superintendent and then we fill it in.
Okay, I have a concern with the May twelfth one. Again, it's, these Friday workshops are killing me because I have other things that I do. Is there any way? No, May twelfth, May twelfth, we have budget presentation and staffing.
Oh, May twelfth, I'm sorry.
Is there any way that that, I mean, this would be the time to change that date? If there's a possibility of doing that and if anyone has any.
Moving that particular one to another date? I would say.
I know we put Fridays because of your schedule and what you're doing, but.
No, I pick Fridays because that's what I like.
Okay, you pick Fridays, that's what you like.
We did that when I first came, there's no rhyme or reason to workshops.
So we could change this workshop date?
Other than I think that the workshops, me personally, I do believe that the workshops should be the same week as the meeting because then the staff has, the next week has nothing. But Fridays were chosen because that's, when I first came on, it was Fridays. And then it moved to Thursdays and I just liked the Fridays better, so as chair, I moved to Fridays. But yeah, absolutely, we can look at what date, May twelfth, I'm looking at the calendar right now, Ms. Forman, you have your hand, I can see.
Yeah, I do, I don't.
I mean, we're going into.
Dropping unplanned, because we talked about this at the reorganization, that by not putting the dates on a calendar, it makes it very hard for us to schedule other things that we have going on. And I'm, you know, changing a workshop date because it doesn't work for one board member, it's not a good precedent. I've been out of town when we had workshop and called in, you know, to do it, to do it long distance. I believe Mr. Kennedy did as well.
I did too.
Yeah, and you did as well, so we have set these dates. I respectfully request that we not monkey with them, leave them as they are.
I'm just saying, that's on Mother's Day weekend as well, that Friday on May.
Mother's Day's Sunday.
Right, that's Mother's Day weekend, I said.
But yeah, no, I mean, Friday of Mother's Day doesn't mean much to many people.
It's just a personal request, I mean, we changed, we changed a whole meeting from a PM to AM for one board member, Ms. Forman.
Sure. She didn't vote for it though.
No, I voted against it, as did you.
Right, so this is a work.
I've said, I don't.
I'm just saying, can we do it on Thursday instead of Friday?
We should not have.
I understand that.
I have a board comment on that, but no, we should not have made that change.
Just think about it.
To a vote, I mean, I don't know what, I'm okay with moving it.
Just to the Thursday morning, nine o'clock Thursday morning on the eleventh, is all I'm asking, one day.
We could tentatively do that and we'll put out to, just in your next board briefing, superintendent, I don't, how does the board wanna proceed? Because I personally don't have an issue, I mean, I'm.
It's up to the chairman.
Have anything that far out? May what, twelfth?
Move it from the twelfth to the eleventh.
I only ask that if we move it, that it's time certain because we do have a education foundation board meeting at eleven thirty on that date, so.
On the eleventh?
Yes.
How long is the budget presentation gonna be? That's gonna be a long meeting.
That's a long one.
Yeah.
So I would say that Thursday would work.
Or move it back to the fifth.
Please, no.
Cause you have graduation week after that. I'm just asking for consideration, everyone else has asked for consideration for time change and. I understand that, I get it, I guess.
That's true.
Good for you, I have surgery on the tenth, so it's not like.
Well, we don't have to decide right this minute.
Right, alright, I'm just saying. You know, when we set these dates back in November, the comment was made, there's flexibility. You know, I'm not asking to do a personal favor. I'm asking for a professional one because this one's a big meeting. And I do not wanna have to zoom in on that one or do teams on that one, I would rather be here. But if this board chooses to not have me, that's fine.
I think in the, in your board briefing, you just see, have superintendent poll everybody, Wednesday's open, great, if not, if you wanna keep it, keep it and we can go from there, if that's okay? Did we have someone else, were you lit up?
Real quick, the meeting on the twelfth of April, maybe Ms. Means knows the, I used to live there, Amanda, Ms. Means. Did we change that because three of us are going to the, has that date been officially changed for that workshop? I thought I saw it.
It was because three were gonna be. It, it was because three were gonna be at a finance.
We're at the finance.
So, so we're moving that workshop.
But the twelfth is the day before we leave.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
And I'll, I'll throw my two and a half cents in on this is, I agree with, with Ms. Bray that, you know, we set these things a year in advance, who knows? You know, your, your child decides to get married or something and it works for everybody in the whole family and you can get a great deal on the airline tickets and wherever you want to be and like, well, we got a board meeting on the fourteenth of September, sorry, we can't do that. I mean, the idea that three or four months in advance, we can't try and accommodate people's, things come up in life like that, I, I would like to have that flexibility. I just think that's a good way to work and help each other out and building relationships and not have us miss important things that go on in our life. That's my two cents on it, so.
I would also like to point out, I scheduled another surgery, um, for a week from Thursday and a workshop was thrown at us for Thursday morning. So, you know, it's, it's hard to plan, if, if you have dates on your calendar, you can work around them. If we start moving dates, um, you know, it just makes things really, really complicated, so.
This is two months in advance. I can understand, you know.
I, I, I would say again, let's, let's, since we have some time, let's get superintendent, if we're okay with Wednesday, the twelfth, we'll figure it out from there. I don't think we need to
I, I actually recommended, you know, just move it up to Friday, the fifth, May fifth instead. I don't know what's going on that day.
Yeah, we can, and we can
I mean, that's just some possibilities. That's still a Friday. It accommodates what, it's just a week ahead. You know, cause, um, I didn't look at the tenth because that's the day I'm having some surgery as well. So I was looking a Friday before or the Friday after.
Okay.
That's all I'm looking at. I wasn't looking at a, you know, maybe Thursday, I did say Thursday, I guess.
I think we've got some time to, to figure it out.
Okay, I just don't want to miss that one. It's too big of a meeting to not be here for.
Um, I agree. Um, no more public comment, obviously not necessary updates, legal update, uh, Mr. Die, do you have anything for us?
Um, just announcement, and I think you all, I think I already said, um, I'll be out next week and visiting Los Angeles. And Patty Petriff is gonna, she'll be at your workshop on Friday. Um, and then when I get back, I think you're meeting the morning of the ninth, um, at eight thirty, is that still on for the
Tenth, is it the tenth?
The morning of the ninth.
Nine thirty meeting.
There's a
Executive, executive
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so depending on my travel situation, I'm flying Southwest, um, Patty or I will be at that as well.
Okay, that's it.
Wait, that's up there Friday, yeah.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Wagner.
Very good. Good afternoon, Chairman Choate, members of the board. I just, uh, I'm going to cut this down to two, uh, for time sake. Uh, number one, uh, Dr. Gansmer had talked about CTE month, which is going on right now, and he had mentioned, just on a quick slide on the screen, uh, he showed Braden River High School. If you are driving by today on your way home, that would be a great site to drop in and see what the commercial art students did. It's one thing to show the photo, but to stand there and they, they color the entire, uh, area of the sidewalk with chalk. So of course you have to see it before it rains, uh, but it is, it's very impressive to see the level of detail that the commercial art students did, uh, with this project. Uh, number two, uh, job fairs. So we closed out February with two job fairs. We had good results. Uh, but I want to make sure you're tuned in to the fact that, uh, really we have three jobs fair scheduled for March and we're looking at March twenty-fifth as being our big job fair at Manatee Technical College. You should see, if you do watch the Spectrum, uh, news channel, you should see, uh, we have over thirty, three hundred and sixty thousand, three hundred and sixty thousand impressions going out between now and then, uh, to advertise that on TV, on their websites, uh, on, online, on all their, uh, channels that they push out. So we are trying that in addition to what we do here with the communications department with Mr. Chapman and Mr. Barber with, you know, Facebook and LinkedIn and all of that. So we're really hoping to fill up our vacancies here, uh, for instructional before, uh, the end of March. So just wanted to give you those two items. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Um, superintendent.
Yes, well, uh, I just want to give a shout out to Lee Com Park and the Pittsburgh Pirates. Uh, I was able to go and participate in throwing out the first pitch, and if you see the video, I did a really bad job today. It was far left. Um, I've done better in the past, I don't know what happened. But, uh, you know, they're wonderful partners. Uh, they supported, uh, three of our schools with a check, uh, totaling fifteen thousand dollars. They give five thousand to each of those individual schools, uh, to, uh, support and sus- uh, assist in whatever needs they may have. Um, and they're just a tremendous partner. So, uh, I encourage you all to check out a spring game, uh, before the season's over. And I, I do know that Chair Choate has worked with the mayor and I believe you have tickets to go to one. So hopefully you'll be able to attend that one coming up. Uh, in addition, we have some events, uh, that should be on your calendar, but I wanted to make sure, I reminded everybody about them. We do have a faith-based leaders in Manatee County event on Thursday, uh, which is this week from six to seven at Southeast High School. And, uh, we have great partnerships with many of our faith-based organizations and it really, uh, became paramount during COVID with the work that we had with our churches. Um, so we're continuing that and continuing that dialogue. Uh, we also have a community resource fair, uh, Saturday, March fourth, from ten to twelve at MTC. And we bring in lots of agencies and we are looking for volunteers. So, uh, if you know anyone that wants to help or, or participate, contact Kevin Chapman, he's your guy. Uh, he's kind of our front person, uh, working with the team, putting that together. We also have our JROTC military ball next week, uh, five PM at the Sarasota Hyatt. And our elementary all county music festival on Thursday, March twenty-third at six thirty at Braden River High School. So it's that time of year where we have a lot of celebrations, a lot of recognitions. And it really does bring a lot of joy to our students and our families. So I hope you're able to participate as much as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, board comments, we've got Messenger, Tatum, Foreman, Bray, Choate. So Ms. Messenger.
I will be short. Um, I just, you had brought up the master board training, I just want you to know, I hundred percent support that. Um, I think that it, um, has a lot of positive aspects. Um, a- and one of them being, you know, ensuring that when we're in this room and we're working at a business meeting that we work together to stay focused on the business at hand, that we walk in that door ready to, to vote. We're ready to, to, we've gotten all of our questions answered. We've met with staff so that we're not, you know, wasting staff's time sitting here listening to us blubber on about something when we could have gotten those, that information beforehand. And that's something that, you know, that we work out in the master board training, talking about, you know, our way of work. Um, so I think that that would really benefit us, um, and, and I know that, you know, that was one of the things that when I saw that come before us, I was like, well, gosh, I didn't know the deadline was the beginning of March, you know, we're going to hire a new superintendent. I think that's really important to have because they, whoever we hire, that will be part of this team. Um, and, uh, so I, we definitely need to do that in order for us to be, um, more successful and business focused and, um, and, uh, so I, I support that and that's really all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Tatum was next.
Yes, from a ministerial standpoint, I had a couple of suggestions for the chair just at the start of meetings that, a couple of things to think about. We might be able to ask people to silence their cell phones because I hear them, I heard one go off today during the meeting. And not that I have a problem with this, but I've seen other people that are not logged into Granicus and so I, it's just, it's a thought, I'm just joking around. I seem to be the one, but just an idea that, but, because actually sometimes what happens is I'm actually logged in, but I don't hit the join button.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
But the point is maybe those two items, like, okay, does it ever have our phones off? We all logged into Granicus. Have you joined the meeting? A couple, like, almost like a, like a checklist and as a pilot, I guess that I, it comes to my mind, you know, gotta, gotta put the gear, put the flaps down, turn the engines on before you start. But it would help that and keep people's cell phones from going off during the meeting. And I will say I was a little distracted today, like, wh- where's Mr. Choate? Is he okay? What's going on with them? So, but anyway, I know you're all good, so.
Yes.
Okay.
Couple of people didn't answer their phones.
There you go. Uh, let's see, I was gonna have another fun, go ahead. But you're here and you're safe and that's what we care about. I was gonna have another fun and fascinating history presentation, but in the interest of time, we'll pass on that. If you really want it, I can send it to you by email. Uh, let's see, and then that, oh, the book process. I just wanted to remind the, the public that the book process is out there and it's available. And if someone, there's certain people in the public that are still concerned about that and I, as I'm talking to them and you can put a book into the process and it will get taken care of and ultimately there is an opportunity to appeal to the board if you're not happy with the results of it. So it's available, it may not be exactly the process that everybody, you can't agree, all of us could not agree in the whole community what it should be, but we voted on it. It's there, it's available and I'll, I will assure that books that are put into the process are looked at and they're adjudicated according to the process we all decided on, so. And that is now all I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Ms. Foreman?
Yes, uh, speaking of the master board training, uh, when we took it last time, uh, Mr. Kennedy commented, it's like marriage counseling for board members. And he's right, and I have evidence today in some of my comments that I have forgotten everything I learned, uh, my apologies. But I think that there are things that we need to work out, okay? So, um, communication is, is key, so, uh, I really look forward to that. I, it's very, very worthwhile. Um, the, uh, just, you know, to follow up on the discussion about, um, you know, uh, mentioned that went to the K eight uh, architect meeting and the Palm View principal was there and, uh, she just had some really insightful comments. Um, that, uh, she's just a great contributor to that and, uh, I commend her. But I also think that we need to be aware that K eight is not like the other, uh, the other schools. So there's, there's a lot, a lot to, to deal with there. And, um, what, since I'm being, you know, a poor board ma- master board member, um, Mr. Chair, um, you know, you, you were late. It was suggested that we wait ten minutes to start the meeting. And I'll reiterate what I said the last time we voted on, on this, is that this is why we have a vice chair. And, um, for you to be late, fine, you know, and, um, now, I can't raise the issue that we voted on last time because I was in the, uh, dissenting category. But, uh, the three people who voted for the March meeting to, um, to be switched to daytime, I'm going to just mention that you can bring it up again, you know, because I, I have gotten complaints. Um, and, um, to follow up on what Ms. Bray said, we're, we're making accommodations for personal reasons. And I do have a problem with that. I try to make the board my priority, you know, and, um, so that's all I'm going to say on that. So, um, thank you guys, interesting meeting. And, uh, I'm kind of glad we didn't have it at night, this one, because of how late it is, but, um, but yeah, thank you.
Ms. Bray.
Okay, tailing on what Mr. Tatum said about the book process. I just, I don't know if the community is aware that that is out there now. Please, if you have concerns, follow the process, find the form. I'm sure there's a form out there. I don't know if that's available online. Is it on our website, the form? Fill it out. That's what, that's why we voted on the process, for the community to have their say as well. So I will say that, um, I don't know if I mentioned it at the work last week, but I did attend a SUG ribbon cutting. It was wonderful. And I did get to see a lot of the technology out there and it, it's wonderful. I wish we could mimic that. And I did attend the long meeting for the prototype yesterday. What a fascinating process that is that we do go through that. Um, it was interesting to see. All I, I had one question, which way on this project was north? Because my suggestion is, you know, I don't know if anybody else plays tennis, but tennis courts should always be north and south. I'll say that to you, Mr. Park, uh, and that's just a protocol, so the sun's not in one player's face all the time. So that was one of the comments I was going to make yesterday is they should always be north and south. So when you're looking at those projects, take that into consideration when you're laying it out, uh, before us and you, Mr. Balliteri, you know, is gone, but he would tell you the same thing, I'm sure. So, um, other than that, I thought it was a good meeting and there is a lot of people that we do get feedback, Ms. Foreman. And changing meetings from AM to PM was, or PM to AM, in this case, I got a lot of feedback on that and people were not happy about it. But, you know, we do, we sit up here and say, yes, yes, and all of those kind of things, but counseling for board members for this training you're talking about, if we all agreed and all had the same point of views, you wouldn't need a board. Everybody would just say yes to everything. Ha- bringing different perspectives is what we're supposed to do, if there might be a different thought. So how we present that, it's not what you say, it's how you say it, is what I've often tried to use as a guideline for me and for everyone else that I talk to and, and people about the books. Not what you say, it's how you say it. So follow the process and I, I hope everyone does that. And I did forget to write the faith meeting at Southeast. I'm glad you mentioned that, Ms. Ms. Saunders. So other than that, I think it was a pretty good meeting. It went long, but that's what we're here for, that's what we're supposed to do. Thank you, sir.
Uh, no other thing I have to say. Sorry I was late. Car, obviously, is sitting at DeSoto Boys Club, Boys and Girls Club. It didn't start once I had my board meeting at eight o'clock there this morning. Um, so I apologize for that. And, um, other than that, good meeting and I will adjourn us with that and see you Friday.